Good evening to you all. By my watch, it's seven o'clock or maybe a couple of minutes past. So it is time for our September 8 regular council meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight and for complying with our mask wearing and our physical distancing. We appreciate your doing that. I'm going to call on the town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Marshburn.
I am present.
Mayor Protim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you. It's my privilege now to recognize Councilmember Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also provide for us the invocation. Mr. Vance.
May I, please? I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Spirit of a living God, we come to you again as humbly as we know how to ask for your guidance and for your wisdom in leading this town of Garner and its citizens. God, we ask that you provide us with the knowledge and understanding to do your will, to do your way, God. We ask that you protect those who are now working within this pandemic during this difficult time. We ask that you protect the first responders, give them the protection necessary to prevent them from having the COVID disease virus, Father. God, we ask that you continue to strengthen and guide everyone and allow us to work through the difficult times that we now have, for we know that in the end that we shall reap if we fain't not. And we will be ever so careful to give you all the praise and the glory when all this is over. And it's in your most precious Son, Jesus Christ's name I pray and we all say.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Vance. The first item of business is something we call petitions and comments. This portion of our meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in the agenda. We encourage citizens, if they will, to sign up in advance with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take actions or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So, Ms. Clerk, do you have any persons that have signed to speak?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay. In spite of that, if there are those of you who did not have an opportunity to sign up, if at this time you came wanting to make comments or petitions, now would be the time to let me recognize you. Are there any? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda. And, Mr. Manager, do I understand that while it's not noted, there is at least one, maybe two closed sessions?
Two. Yes, yes, Mayor. Two closed session, ones for economic development and ones for consult with attorney on potential litigation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, council, you've heard those add-on items, closed sessions at the end. So with that, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, and there is none, then the motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item of business is a presentation at this time, and I'm going to recognize Councilmember Gray Singleton, who will lead us in the presentation of a proclamation having to do with Constitution Week. Is Ms. Kay Whaley here? I don't believe I see her yet. I believe she was gonna, maybe if she was here, was gonna receive the proclamation. So if she comes in a little later, we'll get it to her, okay? But I'll recognize Mr. Singleton at this time.
Proclamation, recognizing Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas it is of the utmost importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend against encroachment. Whereas September 17, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas the celebration of the Constitution was started by the daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, the daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside the week of September 17 through the 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. This resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now, therefore, I, Ken Marshburn, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2020, as Constitution Week in Garner and urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities, which that privilege involves remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness thereof, Ken Marshburn, Mayor of Garner.
Thank you so much, Mr. Singleton. And I think you all would agree with me that the United States Constitution is a document that is rather amazing and has certainly stood the test of time. So I encourage all of you to give attention to that during this nationally proclaimed Constitution Week. And thank you, Mr. Singleton, for sharing that and reading that with us, for us. Okay, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Council, you have the consent agenda before you. Any changes on that, or I will entertain a motion that we adopt the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Properly so. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And it is so ordered, the consent agenda is adopted. Thank you very much. Okay, we now go to a series of public hearings. The first public hearing is CUP SP 2002 RG Communications. I believe the presenter is Ms. Allison Jones. And let me see, Mr. Attorney, I guess I should read my introductory comments regarding this hearing. So, this is quasi judicial hearing, which means it's more formal than other public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and I will now inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or any ex parte communication, or any close familial, business, or other association or relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome. Does that statement impact any of our council members here this evening? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. This is a fact finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever decision the council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impact on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony, and council members are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in the hearing and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of this hearing. I would urge all of you to respect time. We have several items that may take some time this evening, so I ask you to be as concise as you can. And if there are several people here on one item, and there's maybe a spokesman or two who's gonna represent the ideas and opinions of that group, then we'll recognize those as opposed to maybe you recognize the entire group. So with that being said, I believe I need to swear. Any witnesses who are scheduled to testify on this hearing, if you are scheduled to testify, would you go back to our clerk's position and be sworn, please?
That's it? Yes. Just your third? Everybody's signed in, right? You sound most conservative. Let the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
So, we have, Mr. Manager, we have somebody with us virtually at this time.
Yeah, was that, was that Chris? Yeah. That was probably.
That was Chris Johnson.
Yeah, Chris Johnson. Town even here, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, CUP SP, and recognize Ms. Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to present RG Communications, CUP SP 2002. The applicant is Withers Ravanell. The engineer is Rob Cottle. The owner is J O J E N L L C, located at 3965 Junction Boulevard. The tract size is 3.45 acres. The planning commission heard this project at the July 20 meeting, and it's before you guys tonight. The proposed use is light industrial flex space of roughly 19,422 square feet. The minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet, the minimum width of 60 feet. The front setback is 35, the rear is 0 to 25, side is 0 to 25, and the corner is 35 feet. And here is the proposed site plan in different colors representing different landscaping And this is the proposed building. The building will be constructed of brick metal siding and cemented siding. Open space required for this project as this is commercial development. Landscaping buffer requirements, the tree coverage, the plan calls for 10% tree coverage, meaning the, excuse me, the plan is calling for 10.1 tree coverage, and they are meeting it, excuse me, this is reversed, it's 10% tree coverage, and they are providing 10.1 tree coverage. The perimeter buffer is 15 foot wide on the eastern side and 45 foot buffer on the north side of the project. The street buffers along Garner Station Boulevard and Junction Boulevard are 15 feet wide. The street trees provided every 40 feet on average along Junction Boulevard and Garner Station. Junction Boulevard requires 10 trees, and they're providing, excuse me, 12 trees, and they're providing 12. Garner Station Boulevard requires eight trees, and they're providing eight trees. The lighting for this project has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm light exhibiting a color temperature no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspectors department, together with fire department, has reviewed and approved this preliminary plan. Parking is based on one per every 500 square feet of gross flow area and one per every 2,500 square feet of indoor storage. They're required to have 44 with two accessible parking spaces. They're proposing 47 with three accessible parking spaces. This site does not contain any FEMA floodway area. Stormwater management. RG Communications Commercial Development Site is located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements of nitrogen and 85% of TSS removal as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25 year storm events. This development is proposed in wet retention pond to treat the impervious surface developed on site. A wet retention pond will provide treatment for both nitrogen and 85% TSA removal as well as water quantity requirements for the site. A nitrogen payment will be required as a part of this development. This project will connect to existing public and water sewer that is being provided by City of Raleigh. Garner Station Boulevard and Junction Boulevard have currently curb and gutter. Sidewalks along the site's front will be provided under this plan. A review of the Garner Ford Transportation Plan revealed a recommendation for sidewalks along the frontages of Garner Station Boulevard and Junction Boulevard. With installation of sidewalks, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the Garner Ford Transportation Plan. A review of Parks and Rec Open Space Greenways Master Plan revealed no planned recommendations for this project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenway Master Plan. After sufficient review of the plan and revision, staff finds this project as now proposed may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO so long as the following project specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the payment of engineering inspection fee shall be paid to Town of Garner. Prior to issuance of building permit, the payment of a public utility fee shall be paid to City of Raleigh. Prior to the issuance of building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required. And prior to the certificate occupancy, the Stormwater Control, Measure, Maintenance Plan, and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Registry These. The planning commission reviewed this request at the July 20 meeting. With unanimous vote, the planning commission confirms staff findings in Section 5 of the CUP SP 2002 RG Communications as in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, thank you very much for your concise presentation. Councilmembers, questions for Ms. Jones? I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir, none at this time.
Okay, this way. Ms. Behringer?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger? Okay, none. And Mr. Vance?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Are there other persons to testify? Okay, none. This is okay. So I think I'm gonna close a public hearing at this time, and I will call for a motion on this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to CUP SP 2002, I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own. Found the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.1, 4.1. Therefore, approve CUP-SP-2002 RG Communications with the four specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton, and seconded by Mr. Vance. Okay, council, any other question, comment before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And it is passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Jones, and thank you, council. Ms. Jones, are you, well, let's see, are you up next as well, or is Mr. Banford?
Not leaving base, Mr. Banford.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a point of personal privilege, I would like to reiterate to planning staff that I'd like to see copies of planning permission minutes included with any recommendations with projects that come to us from them.
Mr. Manager, I guess we'll ask you to respond to that, or?
Yeah, we'll confer with town attorney and just see what we can provide on that matter and see if that's something that's allowed for this type of hearing. If so, we'll try to make that happen. Now, we have no control over when the minutes are passed at the planning commission, so there might be a delay from when they're passed at the planning commission versus when these items come back to town council. So I'm not even sure they're ready and prepared since it was in, this went to planning commission when?
This went to planning commission July 20.
Okay. So we'll look into that.
I believe that draft minutes for cases were posted to the planning commission's website, so that they are in draft form, they haven't been approved, but the draft minutes are posted.
Okay, thank you. I will now recognize Mr. Banford, who will, I guess, have two presentations regards to annexations. Is that right, Mr. Banford?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I will open the public hearing. Recognize Mr. Banford for his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We've got two annexation public hearings before you tonight. The first one is case ANX 20-06. This is for Ridgemore subdivision. This is a vicinity map of the site outlined in yellow. Also included in this annexation is some right of way along Ackerman Road to fill in some missing gaps. Ackerman Road runs along the northern portion of the project site. White Oak Road is located to the northeast with Hebron Church Road running along the eastern boundary of the site. This subdivision was approved back on November 6, 2017. This was originally submitted as Country Walk subdivision. The project has been renamed to Ridgemore. And this project was approved for 215 single-family lots and 122 townhome units. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Banford. I'll start to my right and see if there are questions here. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Mr. Dillinger?
A quick question on the acquisition of the right of way and annexation of the right of way. Is that a normal thing that happens, or why is this, is this unique in some way?
It's done on a case-by-case basis where you have annexed area across the street. And it's just, it's something that we can do to fill in missing gaps. So when it's properly annexed on the other side of the road, you don't have gaps in the road. So if there is a 911 call and it's in the road and it's in the town limits, then Garner Police would respond. If it's in the road and it's not annexed, then that would be the sheriff's department. So this is just to make sure that emergency town services would respond to this area.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Singleton?
Yes, sir, no questions.
And Ms. Matthews?
No, ma'am.
Okay. No other witnesses to testify on this. You're it, Mr. Banford, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't think there were any one of them. Okay, council, you have this matter before you. Entertain a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt annexation orders for ANX 20-06.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Matthews. Any other question, comments by council? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If there is none, and the motion passes. Let's see, I guess I should have closed that, or did I close it? I'm not sure. But I'm opening the next item. Mr. Banford again.
This next annexation case is case number ANX 20-13, and this subdivision is called Grove at White Oak. And this is a vicinity map of the project site outlined in red. This is at the end, at the western end of Ackerman Road, west of Bingham Station subdivision. This project originally came in under the name Aurora subdivision. It has been renamed to Grove at White Oak. It was approved on January 7, 2019 for 106 single-family homes. So again, annexation is always a requirement as part of their approval before they move forward to get Platts recorded. So this, so they are fulfilling that requirement. Project size is 59.4 acres, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to just ask council in general if you have a question for Mr. Banford, rather than maybe going around the loop. Just chime in if you want to.
No questions.
Any, none? Here, none? Okay. Okay, nobody else to testify? Mr. Banford, you're it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, you've heard the petition. Be happy to entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ANX 20-13.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and by Mr. Matthews, and seconded by Ms. Behringer. Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is no opposition, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is PDZ 2001 and PDMP 2001, 401 Assemblage. And Mr. Banford, I believe you are leading us off in this again, is that right? I believe I need to give my instructions again in regards to quasi judicial hearing, is that right, Mr. Baggett?
Yes.
Okay. Find my note. Okay, much like the others, this is a quasi judicial hearing, or the other one, and there's some rules governing these hearings required by law that we must follow. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. I will now inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or any ex parte communication, any council, any that need to be mentioned?
None.
Okay, or if you have any close familial, business, or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome. This is a fact finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as the basis for whatever action the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony. Councilmembers are only allowed, excuse me, are only allowed to receive factual information about the case. for whatever action the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject, therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning their factual testimony, council members are not only allowed, excuse me, are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss cases outside of this hearing. And again, I would remind you to try to be concise and respect time limits. Mr. Banford, do I understand that the sequence will be to deal with the, with the zoning portion first, and then the site approval second, and we will go through both of those? Public comments certainly can be entertained after the zoning presentation, and then we would vote in sequence at the end of the presentation. So are there persons here who expect to test, testify in this case that have not been sworn? I know several of you were sworn, maybe as a prelude to this, are there any? Okay, if you will, please see the clerk, and she will have you sworn properly, thank you.
You didn't get sworn a few minutes ago?
I did not either, but I'm.
You're here already, all right, we're right here. Okay. The assignment is to declare that the evidence provided is the truth, but nothing but the truth. Thank you very much.
Are we married?
Yes, sir.
We're in trouble.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time, and recognize Mr. Banford for his presentation.
Okay, Mayor, this is a planned residential development conditional rezoning and planned development master plan application. The property is located on Highway 401 or Fayetteville Road, this is south of Swift Creek and north of the McCullers Shopping Center. The property is approximately 277.46 acres in size. Planning commission did review this case at their meeting on August the 17th. And this also shows that the project was originally submitted in, back in January. This map shows the rezoning and project site highlighted in yellow. The light green area is the boundary of Garner zoning ETJ jurisdiction. The site has frontage along Highway 401. To the west, we have Lake Wheeler Road here, to the south, we have 1010 Road, and to the east, going north-south, we have Ol' Stage Road. Eagle Ridge subdivision is located directly to the east. To the south, around the intersection of 1010 and 401, we have commercial, retail, and multifamily uses. The McCullers Walk development contains apartments, single-family and townhome uses. We also have retail shopping on the north side of 1010, and also on the south side of 1010 in Fuquay Varina's jurisdiction. This map also shows the proposed NC 540 outer loop, which is, it's almost a mile south of the site, and this is the proposed corridor outlined in red. And there will be a proposed interchange at the intersection of Fayetteville Road and the outer loop, as well as interchange at Ol' Stage Road. This is a Google Street View looking north on Fayetteville Road with the rezoning site over to the right. It's currently vacant, undeveloped, and vegetated with trees and shrubs. This map shows the zoning, the current zoning that's in this area right now. The property is zoned low-density, single-family, R40. This is a town of Garner zone, primarily set up for lots on Will and Septic, minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. To the east, Eagle Ridge subdivision is zoned R12 PR, which is an obsolete zoning district. To the north, we have a neighborhood in Wake County's jurisdiction, Zone R40W for watershed. To the south, along Caddy Road, there was a recent rezoning to multifamily, and that's designated, designated here on the map as MF2. We also have a neighborhood zone R20 along Fields Drive and Crestwood Drive. A little farther to the south, we have the McCullers Walk development with apartments, townhomes, and single-family, and that is zoned MF1. This table shows the zoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case we have on file was from 2014. This was the Swift Creek Station development that was approved on the north side of Swift Creek. That project has not started construction yet. Next, we have the Town of Garner ETJ expansion in 2017, and then moving forward to the most recent rezoning case was the Cambridge Properties rezoning along Caddy Road, and on the west side of 401 to both service business conditional and multifamily two conditional. This was the Rand Village project. The proposed zoning is planned residential development conditional use District 11, and planned development districts are designed to encourage a mix of housing types, and a density bonus in exchange for substantial landscaping, screening, buffering, and additional open space. PRDs are allowed on tracts of at least 15 contiguous acres. This proposal is for 1,320 units total, and the breakdown is 365 single-family homes, 455 townhomes, and 500 apartment units. And this is at a density of 4.6 units per acre. The tap, the apartment site will, will come in separately as a, as a site plan review, so that will be a separate review process, but it, but that area for the apartments is shown on the master plan. Moving to the proposed zoning conditions, we have use restrictions, so the only use is permissible on the site would be townhomes, single-family detached, and multifamily apartments. Condition number three, the maximum density shall not exceed 4.76 units per acre, with a maximum of 500 apartments and 455 townhomes. So this is a density cap, as well as a cap on the number of apartments and townhomes. In your staff reports, we have conditions on the dimensional standards, and these are in accordance with the PRD regulations. Moving to condition seven, this condition deals with the amenities, a neighborhood recreation amenity is proposed within the development to include a lifestyle center, cabana pool, play lawn, and outdoor gathering space. The lifestyle center shall be a minimum 2,000 square feet under roof, and used on an interim basis as a sales center with a minimum of 300 square feet available to residents for programs. The initial 300 square foot space in the amenity sales center shall be a multipurpose activity room suitable for group club meetings, classes, events, and gatherings. When the sales center is no longer needed, the remainder of the facility shall be converted to serve the lifestyle center function. The cabanas shall include a minimum of 500 square foot covered pavilion area, bathrooms, changing area, and a minimum 3,000 square foot pool. The lifestyle center shall be completed prior to or concurrent with the first certificate of occupancy, excluding the model 1. The remaining elements of the neighborhood recreation amenity area shall be completed within 18 months of recordation of the first final plaque. Condition eight continues with the amenities, small enhanced recreational, recreational and usable open space shall be spread along neighborhood streets. Gathering areas with benches, picnic tables, top lots, playlons, dog parks, dog park and shave, shelter, gazebo are intended. Remaining recreational and usable open space shall have trails to connect open space areas together and provide enjoyment of the natural environment. Improvements to each recreational and usable open space shall be determined at the preliminary plan for each respective phase, in keeping with the stated intent of each provided on the master plan and found acceptable to the planning department. Conditions nine through 13 in your staff report deal with architectural conditions offered by the developer. Moving to transportation, this site does have frontage along Highway 401, and this is a major thoroughfare, and it is maintained by NCDOT, it's currently a four-lane divided facility, and these are the traffic counts from NCDOT, the annual average daily traffic counts from 2007 to 2017. And the, the 2019 traffic count should be available soon, I'm not sure when, but they're usually a year when we get those, so we should get the 2019 count soon. Existing traffic on 401 is through traffic between Fuquay and Raleigh. Counts the, the same both north and south of the proposed development. A transportation impact analysis was required and acknowledges the following, existing improvements being undertaken by both the McCullers Walk and Rand Village developments from 1010 Road to a point just north of Caddy Road. Number two, NCDOT-funded project U-5746 to widen US 401 from Wake Tech Community College to 1010 Road. Number three, the transportation impact analysis included expected traffic from both the current McCullers Walk and Rand Village developments in Garner, as well as expected traffic from the Royal Creek development in Fuquay Varina, and that development is on the, the southwest corner of 1010 and 401. Although the project is expected to be constructed in five phases, with anticipated build-out in the third quarter of 2027, approximately 12 months per phase, the TIA specifically looked at the year 2022, as if all traffic generated by the development would be already active. NCDOT's congestion management unit found the following improvements necessary in the area to be constructed by the developer. North U-turn lane, 225 feet of storage, north of driveway one. Northbound right turn lane, 75 feet of storage, site driveway one. Northbound right turn lane, 75 feet of storage, site driveway two. Southbound left turn lane, 125 feet of storage, site driveway two. Northbound right turn lane, 75 feet of storage, site driveway three. And then southbound left turn lane, 150 feet of storage, site driveway three. A neighborhood meeting was held virtually on August the 6th, this was at 6:00 PM, and this was in accordance with the council-endorsed interpretation for conducting neighborhood meetings when public gatherings allowing 50 people are still prohibited. Approximately 40 neighbors were in attendance, with approximately half of the attendees were from outside of the notification area. And the notification area is highlighted in blue on this map. Two or three additional meetings held since planning commission, applicant can provide details on that later. Moving to the Garner Forward Plan, and looking at the future land use map, approximately 81.76 acres of the project site is designated as mixed-density neighborhood center, and this would support single-family townhomes or apartments over 2 and 1/2 units per acre. Approximately 185.57 acres of the project site is designated as low-density residential, and under this designation, the plan recommends single-family or townhomes at a density of less than 2 and 1/2 units an acre. Zoning consistency statement, based on the preceding, town staff offers that the requested rezoning from R40 to PRDC 11 for 1,320 dwelling units at an overall build-out density of 4.76 units per acre is consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan's future land use map. As noted, the mixed-density neighborhood center designation envisions a mix of medium and high-density residential options, along with limited commercial. The current proposal reserves a limited area for neighborhood commercial should the market support it. And our staff report does have some more detail on the unit calculations that we did. Guiding principles, in addition, staff has identified stated principles within the staff report from the comprehensive plan for living spaces, recreational opportunities, that may support the rezoning request as a reasonable one. That concludes the rezoning portion, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Banford. Okay, I will ask council, if you will, to direct your questions to Mr. Banford at this time, I suppose, or I see Mr. Trezenberg is back there as well. I will start to my right with Mr. Vance.
I have no questions at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
A few questions. On slide six, you mentioned there is a zoning R40W, which is a Wake County zoning, what is that?
That is a low-density district under Wake County, it's similar to Town of Garner's R40, it allows single-family on large lots on primarily Will and Septic. And this is in the, the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, which is a watershed, so I believe that's why it has the W after R40.
Can you explain to us what the Swift Creek Land Management Plan is?
That is a watershed plan that was, I believe, adopted in the late 80s, early 90s, between several municipalities, Garner, Wake County, Raleigh, Cary, I believe a couple others. It is, my understanding, it is state law, there are density restrictions. There are density restrictions, there are impervious limitations. There's also an area designated as a critical area directly around the water, drinking water source of Lake Benson that has additional restrictions on development and density. So this is a plan that we do look at that supersedes zoning. And when development proposals come in, we make sure that it meets the requirements of the Swift Creek Plan.
What is new suburban versus new urban?
I believe the urban, one is up to six units an acre, and I believe new suburban is 2 and 1/2 units an acre or less. So the front portion of this project site is within the up to six units an acre allowance under the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. So it's a blending of the six and the 2 and 1/2 together is what we look at here. And the proposal does meet the density limits of the plan.
Can we get a copy of this plan, the Swift Creek Land Management Plan?
Yes, we will provide that.
I think there's a very concise synopsis on page 109, just for reference sake, Mr. Dellinger, but I'm sure the whole plan is much more comprehensive. Sure enough.
We can get that plan available.
Okay. If you don't mind, let me move on to other council members, and I'll come back to you, sir, just for the sake of time. Ms. Behringer, I recognize you're okay. None there? Mr. Singleton?
David, you mentioned the traffic counts on 401, the 2019 numbers will be coming out soon. What is the, what's the capacity of a four lane, which is having improvements made to it, but what's the capacity of a four lane 401? Is it now, and with a super street, I'm assuming the capacity will be higher. That's why they're making it a super street.
So I do not know the answer to that question. I will refer to probably Chris Johnson for that or Jeff Trezenberg. I don't have, I don't know what.
Jeff shaking his head, he's not sure.
Chris on the line there?
I will minimize this.
Chris may know if there's an IT standard or maybe their traffic engineer when it gets to four lanes, I'm not sure.
So I do not know the answer. I might have.
Okay. I'm assuming the traffic engineer has that information, someone will have it. Okay, they're shaking their heads. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews? None? Okay, I'll circle back. Ms. Behringer? Okay, Ms. Dellinger, back at you.
I had a question too about the development plan that was submitted, and I'm curious as to how binding what's in there is for this approval. So for example, they're requesting a max rezoning of 1,611 units at 5.8 units an acre. Are we bound to that if we approve this?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that. Which, can you repeat the question again? I heard you.
We got the development plan from the developer in our shared drive, and there's a section there, so in their development document that they're requesting a maximum number of units allowed of 1,611 at 5.8 an acre. So the question is, or Jeff, he'll know, are we bound to that by reference?
At this point, they're offering to limit to the 1,320, I believe, is the number. They have not put any wording in there for any flexibility, but if that's something that you would like to entertain, we can do that. But as of right now, they'd be limited to the 1,320 per their condition.
I have another question about the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. So it says approximately 8.77 acres of this new urban, which is six units, dwelling units per acre. And then there's the new suburban, which is 2.5. For the new urban with the six, is, for PRDs, is not the maximum density closer to something like 5.8 than six?
You're asking what the maximum density for a PRD is?
Yes.
I don't know if I know the answer to that question.
I'm asking because I'm seeing there's some conflict between the Swift Creek Land Management Plan and the density that's being proposed in this development. For example, this new urban, based on the calculation of six per acre, says 490 maximum. The new suburban at 2.5, 489, so that's a total of 820 townhomes and single family homes. But the maximum, if you combine that, becomes 979. So I'm curious as to how this density issue resolves itself when they're asking for 13, but according to the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, the max seems to be 979.
Right, so Jeff reminded me that apartments are not counted, they are considered commercial. So the density limitation would only apply to townhomes and single family.
And is that list, is that stated in the Swift Creek Land Management Plan? I'd like to see that. I want to see where it says apartments are commercial. I looked all through our UDO, I didn't see a single time that an apartment is listed as a commercial property. So I'm curious, there seems to be a conflict. And looking at some of the legislation, which is state based, there's a potential liability for the town, if we come into conflict with this Swift Creek Land Management Plan, we could actually be sued by residents by not being in conformity to this plan. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Has the county attorney reviewed this in conjunction with the Swift Creek Land Management Plan?
No, I have not.
So I have not, I have not read the plan recently, word for word. But I do know, having this had brought up since I've been here as planning director, that the member jurisdictions have all been applying it that way. So I do know that Wake County and Raleigh and the other jurisdictions do apply apartments as non-residential because they're not planted on separate lots. They're developed like a commercial property. So they are put in the category then that they have to submit to the person impervious. So I'll be glad to get that documentation from Wake County. Wake County is the coordinating agency on that, but I'll be glad to get that.
Yeah, because I have some questions on the impervious limitations too, because I'm reading in certain parts of our UDO, with multifamily residential development projects to include townhomes, condominiums, and apartments, and other attached multifamily housing units, they'll be limited to a maximum of 50 total impervious surface area. And it's stated in our UDO in 1.5 about conflicting provisions that the more restrictive provision prevails. So we need to get clarity on what is commercial, what is residential, what these impervious limitations need to be. Because my reading of it is that the density that's being proposed exceeds what is allowed by this Swift Creek Land Management Plan. And when I look at House Bill 1054 passed in 2005, if someone were to challenge us in court, it could void the entire decision we make on this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think it'd be wise for us to get an opinion from the town attorney on whether or not this project conforms to the Swift Creek Land Management Plan before we make a decision on it. There's some very significant density differences between the two. And I've not seen in any, either in the statutes, the agreement, the amendments, any reference for whatever the practice is. I haven't seen any reference to apartments being commercial. And in our UDO, they never reference this commercial. So as this is a zoning case, I would imagine that the zoning is the thing that takes precedence over everything else. And if it is commercial, if PRDs are residential zoning districts, they're not mixed use. So I'd like, I think we should get some clarity on if there's a conflict or not between the Swift Creek Land Management Plan and this development as it's been brought to us to this point.
Okay. I will just comment, Mr. Dellinger, that I've had the privilege of working with Mr. Trezenberg and his staff for a number of years, and I've found them to be pretty conscientious in regards to the legalities of these proposals and have a lot of confidence. But I'm sure they will do their best to acquire the information that you're looking for there. And in the meantime, Mr. Vance, I don't think I got a chance to get to you.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Anybody on this side? I'll circle back this way. None? Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger? I'm back to you again, sir.
Uh, yeah, I have more.
Who's going to testify next? Do we have that person identified? Person might be able to answer questions.
Are you talking about the applicant?
Yeah.
The applicant is here to respond to questions.
Okay.
Do you think it'd be more efficient to do the subdivision plan also at this time?
We can.
That might be better to hear the whole thing. That way the people who want to speak to it can speak to any part of it.
Yeah, okay. And we had talked about that. So if we're ready to move on to the other, are we okay with that, council? Okay. All right. Good to see you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I figured I might need these at some point. All right. My name is Stacey Griffin. I am here to present the subdivision plan conformity section for you. Again, this is 277.46 acres plus or minus with a total of 1,320 units, 365 single family, 455 townhomes, and 500 apartments. The minimum lot sizes and setbacks, I've kind of grouped those together for you just to hopefully make that a little easier. So product A would be the 500 multifamily apartments, which there's not a minimum lot area for that. Product B is the front load townhomes. There's 265 of those with the minimum lot area being 2,200 square feet and a minimum lot width of 22 feet. And you see the setbacks there for that particular product. Product C would be 190 rear load townhomes with 2,200 square feet lots and 22-foot wide lots. And again, the setbacks are there for you as well. Product D is the single family detached. That is 4,920 square feet lot minimums with 41 feet dimensional requirement width and the setbacks. And product E would be the single family ranch style home. There would be 80 of those with a 51-foot wide lot of 66, 30 square feet minimum. For the landscape and buffer requirements, the 12% tree coverage is to be met with existing and proposed plant material. Each preliminary plan will be checked for compliance as those are submitted. There are perimeter buffers. The only required perimeter buffers would be the multifamily inside the development with the adjacent vacant land as well as against the railroad right of way. And those buffers will be reviewed when each preliminary plan is submitted. There is a 25-foot perimeter setback around this as it is a PRD. And there are street trees provided every 40-foot on average along 401 and all the internal streets as well. PRDs require 25% open space. In this case, that's 69.365 acres, and they've provided 26%, which is just about 71 acres. The site also has a pedestrian circulation system of sidewalks and trails as is required by PRD. The site has amenities that includes a neighborhood recreation amenity that includes a lifestyle center, cabana, pool, play lawn, and outdoor gathering space. The Lifestyle Center will be 2,000 square feet minimum and will be used as a sales center while needed. There will be a minimum of 300 square feet available for resident programs during this time. Once the sales center is no longer needed, the remainder of the facility will convert to the resident Lifestyle Center. The cabana will be a minimum of 500 square foot covered area with restrooms. The pool will be a minimum of 3,000 square feet. The apartments will have their own amenities, including outdoor spaces, a minimum 900 square foot pool, a minimum 5,500 square foot clubhouse, and a minimum 400 square foot covered male kiosk area. There are over 12,232 linear feet of greenways and trails inside this PRD. The inspections Department, together with the Fire Department, has reviewed and approved this plan. There is no FEMA designated flood plain on the site, but the site is impacted by riparian buffers, as you see the blue line streams there on the map. For stormwater, the site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes STEM 10 stormwater wet retention and dry detention ponds to treat impervious surface for nitrogen and all water quantity requirements to ensure stormwater requirements are met as part of the development. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required. The site will be served by the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer Infrastructure. For roads and sidewalks as infrastructure, the development proposes two right-in, right-out entrances into the development of US 401. NCDOT has also preliminarily approved two southbound leftovers. Along the site frontage, US 401 will be improved to half the ultimate section, which is a six-lane median divided facility and 150 feet of right of way with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The curb and gutter is dependent upon the speed limit reduction from 55 to 45 miles an hour. A median divided collector entrance roadway within 75 feet of right of way will be the main entrance into the neighborhood. Standard collector and local streets will make up the remainder of the internal street network. The development also provides options for future connections to Brookwood Residential Subdivision and other vacant land adjacent parcels. There you see the site plan before you. I've pointed out a few things for you. US 401 is at the top of your screen. There is a reserved portion that is noted currently for future residential development. That is the white area up along 401. And then your townhomes are the pink and purple type colors with the two different shades of blue being your single family homes. The amenity area is pointed out fairly central to the development, and the kind of peach color is where the apartments would go. The dotted red line is the trails as well. For each dwelling unit, they're required to have two parking spaces. Townhomes do have an additional requirement of one space for every four units for guest parking. These will be reviewed at the preliminary plan stages those are submitted. Lighting, parking lot lighting will be reviewed for compliance. Lighting, parking lot lighting will be reviewed for compliance prior to approval of each preliminary The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan calls for US 401 to be a six-lane divided section in the area bordering the project. And there are no bicycle, pedestrian, or greenway recommendations adjacent to the project site. Therefore, with the completion of half the ultimate section, which is the six-lane divided section with curb and gutter, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendation of the 2018 transportation Given that much of the site is impacted by new riparian buffers, which decreases the suitability of the land for active recreation, the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department did not indicate that they were interested in additional dedication during their review of the project. Therefore, this project may be found in conformity with the Parks and Recreation, Open Space, and Greenways Master Plan. And there you do see, as we've talked about a little bit here, the two different designations for the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. And the figures that Councilman Dellinger was referencing earlier with the breakdown of the new urban and the new suburban and how many units each would allow. So as we've calculated, it would allow 979 units. Currently, there are 820 townhomes and single-family dwellings proposed. So under that plan, again, apartments being treated as commercial development, then the townhomes and single-family dwellings fall under the allowable threshold of 979 units. With the proposed preliminary stormwater infrastructure, this plan may be considered in conformity with the Swift Creek Land Management Plan. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project is now proposed conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following conditions are met. One, prior to receipt of approved plans, engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the town of Garner. Two, prior to recordation of the first final plat, a voluntary annexation petition for the entire project site shall be filed with the planning department. And documents establishing a homeowners association and restrictive covenants shall be submitted to the Garner Planning Director for review. Three, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department. And the stormwater program administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to an approved mitigation bank. Four, prior to the issuance of each building permit, a fee in lieu of parkland dedication shall be paid to the town. Five, prior to recordation of the final plat for the second phase or prior to the expiration of an 18-month period, following recordation of the first final plat, whichever occurs first, the neighborhood recreation amenities shall be completed. And six, the developers shall be responsible for all roadway improvements required by NC DOT. The Planning Commission reviewed this request at their August 17, 2020 meeting. By unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 7 that PD MP 2001, US 401 Assemblage, is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. The Commission further accepted staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section 5 of the report as their own and recommended approval of PDZ 2001 to the Town Council by unanimous vote. There's your recommended motions. I can answer any questions that you might have. And the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stacy. I'll start with Mr. Vance on my right here, if he has questions, comments.
No questions.
Okay. I'll go around the horn again. Mr. Dellinger.
Can we also get a copy of the traffic impact analysis? I read in something that it went from 401 to Brookwood, what seems to be presented tonight. Is it, the analysis doesn't, does the analysis go all the way to Brookwood or not?
Emily.
Yes.
Gabby can look that up while we're...
I mean, I'd like to also, it'd be nice if we had a copy of the full traffic impact analysis as well, if it's being presented as competent evidence at this hearing. The listing of the driveway, how many driveways are there? Are there three listed in the slide? And where are those driveways?
So there's the two going out onto 401. And then the right-of-way connection to Brookwood. And then there is a emergency access as well. Oh, yeah, the third access is the apartment. Sorry. Glad Jeff whispered out my ear. They'll have their own access.
Is that indicated in the, where is the design for that? Like, where is it located on this map?
We don't have the design for that yet, noted in the PRD. I don't, I don't think they've narrowed that down yet because that will come in as a separate site plan.
So that, another question.
It will come, it will come back to you because it'll, it'll be a conditional use permit.
Is it, so I'm confused. So we're approving a PRD for this whole development, correct?
Correct.
We're going to do another rezoning later?
No, it'll, it'll be rezoned already. And so it'll be subject to the conditions in the PRD. But a conditional use plan for the apartments will come back before you.
Is that normal?
It's not abnormal, but we don't typically get, we haven't gotten any with apartments since I've been here at least. So oftentimes, we do get separate site plans for these type of things.
Have we ever had this amount of mixed variable density development in a PRD before with apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes that we've approved?
I don't think we have. We have not since I've been here, but I don't think we've had...
My toller's walk, even though my toller's walk has all three, does it not?
It wasn't a PRD, was it? Yeah, it was done as a cluster. It wasn't a PRD. But yes.
But it was still all three types of...
It is. That's correct.
Those site plans were submitted separately?
I believe so.
Yes, we had three different...
So all three of them were separate, weren't they?
Yep.
At a different hearing? They were done, it was submitted at a different hearing for review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Behringer.
It does.
Mr. Schengel.
Can I add that Gabby did find out the TIA does go up to Brookwood, so...
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, right, Smith.
Mr. Matthews.
Nothing right now, Ms. Smith.
Okay. All right. Let's see, we have somebody testifying after you. I'm not sure who that is. Do you know? Counsel, you satisfied for now? Okay. Who is next up?
I think just the applicant, right?
Okay.
I don't think we have anybody else from staff at this point to speak.
From the applicant at this time, and they'll recognize members of the public as well who may want to speak. If you will, identify yourself with a name and address, if you will, sir.
I would be very happy to. Keith Roberts, 202, Bonica Creek Drive, in Garner. And I welcome this opportunity. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. I have quite a list here to go through, a little longer than normal, I'll go ahead and admit. But hopefully you will see by the time I get through all of this, there's a method to the madness. And I'm hoping that in the long run, it will save us, save us a lot of time. And a lot of that thanks can go to the neighbors in the area of Brookwood Subdivision. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the development, but I do hope as I go through this, you'll see that the neighbors are also very much on my mind as we have worked together through this process. We are very excited to be here tonight and have this opportunity for Garner. In the past, as has been mentioned, this area was located in the Wake County's jurisdiction and was developed under Wake County requirements, which included individual wells and subject systems, which do require larger lots, which you will see on adjoining properties. But we are here tonight because this area is in the ETJ of Garner, and therefore, we are required to develop under Garner regulations and make all the necessary utility roadway connections in the density recommendations as set forth in the Garner UDO, and therefore would appreciate your support on the, on the rezoning. We would like, as always, to thank staff for the detailed presentation and for working with us through this process and to make sure that we are in compliance with Garner Forward and the UDO. I often wish that everyone could see how much effort goes into getting to this point. We first started working on this in March of 2019. Much of the criteria that should be met has been laid out nicely by staff, and it does illustrate that the proposed master plan complies with all applicable provisions of the UDO, and that we can, will comply with all requirements of the UDO, and that we are in compliance with the transportation plan, other adopted plans, and it will meet the intent and is in harmony of the zoning district. And as mentioned, the public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. And adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided for the utilities, such as with the City of Raleigh. All of these were presented within the staff report. There are also some additional items that should be addressed, such as will the project endanger the public health and safety of the area? Will the project have an adverse impact on the natural environment? We believe the answer to both of these questions are no due to the nature of this type of development that has utilities and preserves open space. Another question is, will this project have a negative effect on adjoining or abutting property owners' property values? We believe the answer to that is also no. The home values should be in line with what is existing. The last two questions to address have to do with compatibility. Is it compatible within this area? And is this project a like-use in terms of home size, buffers, operating characteristics, and traffic patterns? Yes, minimum home size is laid out and the conditions of the PRD are compatible, and this project goes above and beyond on buffers and our screening as listed in the PRD. And the proposed is consistent with the toller's walk and Rand Village. I've already mentioned how hard staff worked on this to make sure that our i's are dotted and t's are crossed before they would put us on this agenda. I think that going through all the items is important. It is also important to try to be a good neighbor and to listen to the concerns of the neighbors. Again, I really want to thank the neighbors for their input through this process. It has been truly a model of how things should work. The neighbors I have met with on multiple occasions have not taken the "not in my backyard" approach that we often see. I feel like we've worked together to try to make everything as good and feasible as possible. As mentioned in the staff report, we did conduct a neighborhood meeting for this project and had a good amount of participation, including those that joined us from the Brookwood neighborhood. We asked all who attended to continue to ask questions in the hope of working out as many issues as possible prior to tonight's meeting. It was clear in this meeting and with follow-up meetings that the main concern is traffic. At first, it seemed a little strange to me because I was thinking, how can traffic be an issue on a four-lane divided highway? Then I went out and visited Brookwood and quickly realized that the main issue is not the traditional traffic jam and slow-moving traffic. It is the opposite. Traffic is moving too well and too fast, which makes it very difficult for folks in Brookwood to get onto Highway 401. The one difference on this project that we see, because it is not a question of capacity, is the question of the amount of traffic moved by the entrance at Brookwood. Also, the situation at the entrance of Brookwood has been an issue for years, regardless of what is proposed tonight. But again, 401 is a divided highway and is not at capacity, which is also different than what we are typically discussing on the impact of approving developments of this size that actually connect to two-lane roads, not four-lane roads. We have been working with the neighbors and DOT to address issues at the entrance of Brookwood. We have had multiple calls, multiple Zoom meetings, and an on-site meeting with DOT on August 26 to review and discuss existing conditions. The issues at the entrance of Brookwood are not ideal. But as DOT stated, what is proposed tonight is just a drop in the bucket compared to the existing traffic on 401. Additionally, DOT has been aware of this situation for a while and have made improvements to the Brookwood entrance over the years, which included adding a right-turn lane, adding an island at the entrance of Brookwood, and converting the intersection with 401 to a left-end-only of 401, which created a right-in, right-out situation at Brookwood. I feel like this meeting was very informative with DOT, as neighbors had the questions, a chance to ask questions to DOT, and got explanations on why some things were done and others were not. It was asked by the neighbors if a no-U-turn sign could be installed on 401 at their entrance. There was also a question about stoplight. The DOT stated that the low amount of traffic on Brookwood would not meet stoplight thresholds. Neighbors also asked about a speed limit reduction to 45 miles per hour. DOT said this is something that the neighbors can request. Additionally, as mentioned, the TIA has been conducted and approved with recommendation and in accordance with the UDO. I think it is important to note that these projects take time to build. However, the TIA assumes full buildout of the project in 2022, which is not expected to happen until 2027. Prior to buildout, 540 will be connected to 401. DOT will be making major improvements at the intersection of 1010 and 401. We believe that all these improvements will help driving conditions within this area. We had a follow-up Zoom meeting with the town and DOT on September 3. I had a three-hour meeting with the neighbors at the Brookwood Subdivision on this past Friday, September 4. Out of many of these long meetings, many ideals have arisen. Out of this meeting came more questions and some more requests by our neighbors in Brookwood. One thing I tried to stress during this roundtable discussion that we had this past Friday, you know, what is being proposed tonight is a guide on minimums and maximums and standards and requirements. And we are basically here to get the rules that we need to abide by if we move into full site plan development. The neighbors had questions like, again, the no-U-turn sign being placed, speed limit reduction from 55 to 45, the turnaround being installed for this project prior to getting to the Brookwood Subdivision. All of these have been presented to DOT, and we are currently working with DOT to try to make all of this happen. DOT has, is studying the no-U-turn sign. We do not have a timeframe on that, but we will continue to work with DOT to get a no-U-turn sign placed at the entrance of Brookwood Subdivision. There's also been a request made to reduce the speed limit from 55 to 45 by the residents of Brookwood and also by town staff. That study is also underway, and we are hopeful that will get reduced to 45 miles per hour. But we will continue to work with DOT in Brookwood to try to meet those concerns. Also, the neighbors have requested items like a drawdown test on some wells within these Brookwood Subdivision to develop a baseline in order to make sure that this project wouldn't affect their, their wells. And that also has been agreed to by the developer. As I mentioned earlier about the buffers going above and beyond, I think that's, you know, very important to point out, and it's shown on the master plan. The required buffer is a 25-foot undisturbed perimeter buffer. What we're showing, which basically means the rear property line of the lots could be at the 25-foot mark of the proposed buffer. What we're currently showing on the PRD is a 25-foot undisturbed buffer plus an additional 50 feet prior to... 50 feet prior to getting to the back of the proposed lots. So instead of 25 feet, we're showing 75 feet separation distance. There also were some environmental concerns, and we pointed out to the neighbors that I think it's important to remember that is why a lot of these areas were under county jurisdiction are now being annexed into the municipalities, which are able to extend utilities so to eliminate the need for on-site subject systems, well contamination, and yield issues, and allow for more conservation and open space. Also, these types of areas allow for control of our stormwater and treatment and puts limits on impervious areas. We have to meet the state and Garner stormwater, road control, and buffer requirements. It is hard to get into all the weeds and idling exactly how this gets accomplished as we have not yet done construction drawings for this project. But when we do, they will be reviewed by Wake County and town and Garner engineering staff to make sure that we are in compliance with all applicable rules. Based on the above that I mentioned, that were some requests by the neighbors of Brookwood, we also, I got some additional requests over the weekend. So the dialogue that we had started on Friday continued into Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, much up today in hopes of making tonight's hearing much easier on everyone. So again, I really appreciate the neighbors, and so we compiled all those concerns through all these neighborhood meetings, through hours and hours of back and forth to meetings, and we came up with a list of conditions that we would like to present tonight to town council that we've all agreed on, that these are in addition to what is currently in the staff report and in addition to the current existing conditions. I have produced the Brookwood earlier today, and I'll leave these, and then I can hand them in. But the conditions would be, the developer agrees to testing of two wells on the eastern property line with Brookwood and two wells on the northern property line with Brookwood. These four locations will be chosen by residents of Brookwood subdivision. The developer agrees to leave the tree buffer in place within the easement of the future stub road connection to Brookwood subdivision. Developer will maintain not the 25-foot buffer that is shown here, the tree protection, but we will maintain a 35-foot undisturbed tree buffer on the property line that joins Brookwood subdivision. Additionally, developer will conduct a tree survey of any trees that are 24 inches in diameter or larger that are located within the 25 feet of the Brookwood property line. Once survey is complete, developer or developer's engineer will walk the area with residents to Brookwood, who will join in the development plan to save such trees, and assist us to make sure that the drip line area of the trees are protected to the maximum extent possible. Such measures may include, but not limited to, a 25-foot radius on the tree. Additionally, grading and tree protection plan will be shared and reviewed with the adjoining neighbors of Brookwood prior to the submittal of construction drawings. If and where wet ponds are installed, developer agrees to work with landscape architect to make sure that proposed vegetation within the wet pond areas do not cause or attract mosquitoes. Additionally, such vegetation, like cattails, if they do appear, will be removed as part of the routine of annual maintenance. There was also a request made to DOT, as I mentioned, to reduce speed limit from 55 to 45. As per DOT, the request is now working its way through the system. A speed study will be required. That is underway. Timmons Group will continue to assist the Brookwood neighbors with this process. Brookwood has requested that a no-U-turn sign be placed at the entrance of their subdivision with NC Highway 401. DOT is also studying this, and Timmons Group will remain involved in order to assist Brookwood and try to expedite with DOT. Developer has agreed to make improvements at the entrance of Brookwood subdivision to improve the turnout radius onto NC Highway 401. Developer agrees to spend up to $10,000 to make improvements pending DOT approval. One last condition, if the town drops the emergency access, which is something I know Mr. Whitman with the Brooklyn neighborhood would want to talk about here in a second, the developer will not develop the area on the connections of the emergency access. So again, I can't tell you how many hours went into that list and how many meetings, and I'm very thankful that we were able to spend this time to go through and to work most, all these issues out, and I think there may be a couple more things that the neighbors want to talk about, but I feel like we've taken a list at once with 50 down to, we've narrowed it down and come to a lot of compromise. So I've been doing this for a lot of years. I've never seen this kind of cooperation. I've never had the opportunity to work with neighbors this closely prior to coming to a council meeting to try to work out everyone's concerns, and a lot of credit goes to developer and the neighbors for working together. In my opinion, it's been a model of the way things should be done in the future, and it's just been a wonderful experience to get to know the really super people within the Brookwood subdivision. And I'm here tonight and also some of our development team, the Timmons, who can answer any specifics on the development questions. Scott Copeland, who's developer, he's also here tonight, he can answer any questions. One thing before I shut up and let you guys ask questions, going back to Mr. Delinger's question about apartments and townhomes, one thing I can say on that, that since the new river buffer rules came into play, which was around 1997, you know, we've had to control nitrogen on our projects, which typically required a nitrogen buy-down. Well, the state, that is a state, that money doesn't come to the town, it goes to Lake Watershed Protection Program with the state or mitigation banks that we pay that into. The way that has been calculated since 1997 is if you're a commercial property, you have to show basically that you're getting to 10 pounds per acre or less on nitrogen. If you're residential, it's 3.6. When we go through and fill out the table and calculate the check payments, our apartments are in the 10 pounds per acre category, not 3.6. So apartments have always been considered, and every municipality within the new river area have been considered commercial based on that buy-down of 10 and not 3.6. And I'm here for questions, and other folks are also available, and we appreciate your time, and I know Mr. Whitman here, he's excited to get up here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are you sure you don't have something else? I'm not encouraging that, I'm sorry. You were quite thorough, I think, so why don't you catch your breath there for just a minute, and I'll give the council a crack at that. I want to just commend you for what appears to me to be just a classic example of a real effort to hear from the neighbors. We may hear from some tonight, but it sounds to me like that the effort was very commendable. So having said that, I'll see if Mr. Singleton has any questions for you.
Question specifically for Mr. Roberts, or if I have a traffic question, I'll put a traffic engineer specifically for him.
Well, yeah, why don't we wait till we get the traffic engineer?
Keith, you mentioned that you've had obviously multiple meetings, I mean, not in Zoom calls, so you've met with the neighborhood multiple times. I mean, and since the planning commission meeting, you've met with them multiple times.
Yeah, we had a, we've had a meeting on Friday was the big one that we, I think we started around 2:00, ended around 5:00 p.m., three hours, roundtable discussion at Mr. Whitman's house on Friday afternoon.
And you've also, and DOT has also met with them on-site at least once, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. And I know it's labor-intensive trying to bring everybody together, but you know, it's what we're all about, we're growing here, and you'd be commended, you guys, the developers as well as the neighbors stepping up and working together to accomplish a common goal as we are growing. And the fact we're going to really, that Southern Loop's going to time right in with kind of what you folks are trying to do down there, hopefully that's going to curtail a lot of that traffic coming through on 401, as well as the, all the road construction and widening right around that intersection. It's a busy part of the county, but looks like you guys have worked out your details, and the transportation people are working on theirs now, so we'll see where it goes. But you ought to be commended for that. It's a good example for other developers coming in to do due diligence and makes it a friendly environment when we get into this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vance.
Yes. Question, yes, it was a very, a lot of public involvement in this, which I take my hat off to you because of the size of the development that's being proposed, and to the neighbors who also worked with you in doing what is necessary to try to move this forward. In reference to what you said about mitigation and going to the state agencies?
Yes.
Which state agency did you go to reference the mitigation piece for, I guess, streams of wetlands and runoff, things of that nature?
That's through the North Carolina Watershed Protection Department as the state, and most of that they have turned over for us where we pay the fees to or in the mitigation banks for any impacts. And the same way, whether we're impacting wetlands or string buffer or anything like that, you have to pay into those fees, and the nitrogen buy-down is part of that.
Okay. All right. I'm looking for the questions.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Delinger.
Thank you. Question on the driveways. So there are only right outs out of this property that's developed?
Correct. Right-in, right-outs.
When people want to go to 1010 Road and go shopping, or when 540 comes, how are these people going to make their U-turns to go all the way back down the opposite direction?
We're adding a U-turn on 401 in the median just north of this project before you get to the church.
Is that right at Brookwood 2?
I can't, is it there? I think there's a road there called Gate Wood. Does that sound like Gate, Gate something? I think, I'm not going to let our transportation engineer talk about that, where they're located. But there's already one existing on 401, and I know we're proposing at least one more on 401. There'll be multiple, basically what they call, I'm going to let Jeff speak to it, it's a superhighway design approach, kind of like you see in Holly Springs where in lieu of stoplights, you come out and make a right, go down and make a U-turn to hopefully keep traffic moving better and safer.
So that improvement, that U-turn improvement is part of what you are doing to the standards of that super street that won't be coming for 15 years? That's how they go. Was 1010 Road included in this traffic impact analysis or not?
Yeah. I can, if you can get a traffic specific, Jeff can answer the traffic questions.
My name is Jeff O'Connell, 5410 Trinity Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27607. I'm a registered PE, registered professional traffic operations engineer. I didn't seal the study, my employees sealed the study, but I was definitely involved in it the entire way through. So to answer your question about the U-turn point, I believe that's at Oak Ridge, I think it's the name of the road, it's just north of our site, will be making a U-turn right before Brookwood. We scoped this study with NC DOT and the town. Because of the U-5746 widening project at, I'm sorry, it made me hard to talk. Because of the U-5746 widening project at the intersection of 1010 and 401, DOT said that that intersection wasn't necessary because they're already doing the, I think they're doing three turn lanes there, and they're widening the, adding a third southbound through lane. They're also, that's extending down to 540 project, so that's all just south of where we are. To answer an earlier question, just before we move on, four-lane divided capacity is a hard question to answer because there's a lot of factors that actually go into it. You can assume, let's say for the sake of being conservative, probably somewhere in the 42,000 to 44,000 vehicles per day range. It goes up based, it really depends on the number of access points, how those access points are controlled, whether they be signals or stop or whatever. So the more signals you've got, the lower your capacity is. The point of the super street is to remove the, some of the signalized intersections, allow more green time, or allow more uninterrupted through flow on 401, which increases capacity. So that's a complicated answer to what seemed to be like an easy question.
Ms. Behringer.
Yes, I have just one question. I may have missed it, but as we were talking about coming out of Brookwood, did DOT address the site distance problem?
Yes, they did. When we were out there that day, they actually did a calculation for that road at that speed limit, the site distance should be around 550 feet. That would be a design criteria if we were designing that intersection today. When DOT tested it on site, they came up with numbers north of 800 feet. So the site distance was, did not seem to be an issue. It's really more of an issue of fact, the speed limit is 55, and folks are driving 75.
Got you.
You know, we did talk about, you know, cars trying to get out also onto 401 from Brookwood, and even talked about having an acceleration lane added there. But DOT, when they did all their improvements there at the intersection, they said they basically had looked at that, and they didn't want to widen too much more on the Brookwood side because they felt like by doing that, cars on 401 would be encouraged to take a U-turn because it would give them more asphalt. So in working with the neighbors, what golfers willing to do to try to make that situation better, currently when you come out of Brookwood, it's almost a 90-degree turn to try to get onto 401. I know I went out there and drove my pickup truck, which is about 20 feet long, and to make a right-hand turn, my front bumper had to face across the center of the road and get into two lanes to get onto 401. And so by making that radius better, which the developer has been willing to do, that will help keep everybody in that lane and give a better angle for folks of Brookwood to come out and to make it much safer than what currently is existing today.
Thank you.
Okay. You should just get you a smaller truck, sounds like.
Better driver.
I think Mr. Singleton had a question for transportation, right?
He answered it. I was asking about capacity, and I was also going to ask about the location of the U-turn with the superhighway, and that's been answered also.
Okay. You good? All right. Let's see, who's next? Anybody else? Let's see, I'm going to recognize any members from the public who wish to speak, but is anybody else from the developer? Okay. Hearing none. I see a gentleman back there. You wish to speak, sir?
Yes, sir. Please. I just have observation, please.
You have to be sworn in.
I believe you need to be sworn, is that right?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, go back and be sworn. Was there anyone else while this gentleman was being sworn that had anticipated making any comments? If you would please, sir, state your name and address and your position.
Thomas Matthews. I reside at 7512 Fairwood Road, Raleigh. My interest in my home is directly across from the most southern entrance to the subdivision on the map. Couple observations I want to make. I agree with the gentleman talking about Brookwood and the traffic. It is difficult to get people to slow down when the speed limit is 55. I applaud him for giving the DOT to work on that. The issues I see, though, deal with the southbound lane and giving people an opportunity to decelerate into the subdivision. You'll notice there's a curve there approaching what I call the store property, just a little bit north of my driveway, and it ends about my driveway, probably about 800,000 feet. There's a lot of motor vehicle accidents that are occurring in that curve, and it's been that way ever since the highway opened up, the four lanes in the mid-'60s. Over the last couple of years, there's been, I think, three deaths in that curve area. I've had damage to my driveway now three times in the two years I've been there built. The traffic is only going to get worse, not from just the subdivision, but from all the other development going on, especially with NC 540. So I would hope that the planning commission and the town council can really get DOT to study this because it's in their ballpark, and I know that they at some point have a vision for what they call 401 realignment. This is like 20 years out from about Manor Ridge to Lilleton. And how this plays in with all this development, I'm not sure how it's going to work, but the people need to have a long length of... the, the people need to have a long length of roadway to move over out of travel lane to decelerate because people are, regardless of what the speed limit is, they tend to drive what they feel is comfortable for them. Unfortunately, in this area, it's not comfortable enough. And like I say, I'll just make some observations here as to get in your, your minds that development is going to be even more dense than what it is with this development going on. Also, I have no idea what will happen across from this development when my mother passes and some of these family lands start being turned over to developers. Like I said, I'll probably still be alive doing where I'm at. I'm not moving anymore. And I would like to be able to get out without that wave of traffic to kind of rush out or kind of go stop, let me out. But, um, that's all I got to say.
Okay.
I wish things were slowing down some out of the country, but it's not a country anymore. I appreciate the council's time. Y'all have a good day.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. I believe I saw two other gentlemen, I believe. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I see a lot of familiar faces, worked together several years ago, tried to keep the red route out of Garner, split it in half, and now asking Garner to help us with some things in Brookwood. First, I want to say thank you to Keith and Timmons Group. They've been really great to work with, to help us with our concerns and with the developer. It's been very helpful.
I don't believe you identified.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Bruce Whitman.
Okay.
2201 Woodnow Drive, Raleigh NC 27603.
Okay.
Um, so appreciate seeing you all again and some new members here today. So there's been a couple, Keith and his group have handled a lot of our issues and had made this list of eight, eight things that he read that was really helpful. But I did have a couple more questions. Do I need to talk about the subroad and all? Has that been dealt with? That's taken care of? Okay. So the thing I really want to talk about tonight, besides, I know you guys hear about traffic and noise and schooling, so I won't talk about any of that. I'm going to talk about this, which thing I call the sliver road, which is trying to tie Brookwood into this assemblage. And it's, it's, to me, it should be a non-issue. This is, I don't, anyone can point, is there a pointer of some sort? I want to show, we can see it on this map, but I didn't point it out to you.
See if we have one over there.
Stacy, you'll need to do it there, please, because it won't show up for council screens if you, if the laser pointer's used.
Okay. Get the mouse. Yeah. Okay. So the sliver road is that little piece right there, and I, some of you have a map, I think, that I, I put out and I circled it. Uh, this is a road that's thirty-four feet touching Brookwood Parkway Drive and eighty feet touching the edge of the assemblage. And for some reason, they want to keep that and use it as an emergency road into Brookwood, which I think is unacceptable. They've tried to, in the past, bring logging trucks in, and the DOT would not allow, would not give them permission. So I don't see why emergency units need to come through Brookwood when you've got three entrances already. We only have one entrance in Brookwood. We've done it for sixty years and we haven't had an issue. So I don't think we need to have that, that piece of land tied into Brookwood. The, the, your owner of that piece of land, Joy Parrot, has already agreed to sell it to the individual who has the houses on both sides. On both sides of that little sliver road are homes that his family owns, and he would like to buy that piece and tie those families back together rather than have this thirty-four foot road go through, to pull into Brookwood. We, we see this road as a way to invite traffic into Brookwood, whether it's walking or art ATVs or whatever. We don't want that. We want to be separate from assemblage. So if there's, I don't, I don't know what the issue is, something about emergency thing. Well, I would find, if you've got three roads, I think that's enough emergency roads to bring in anybody you need to take care of anything. Something about having the trees fall over a road, well, there's not going to be any trees over the roads because it's going to be all developed. But, um, is, is this really necessary? I'm asking you all right now, is this sliver road necessary to this development, to have us way, to touch into Brookwood? I'm asking.
I don't know, but I'll see if we can't find you an answer.
Mr. Mayor, in the past, I know with the fire department, a lot of divisions have these things, but most times they've got a, a gate over and it's locked, so no vehicles can go through it.
I understand that.
And only the fire department, if I remember, Chief Poole has got a key to it. Chief Poole's in the back. And that's just a total emergency. Nine times out of ten, it'd probably never be used. But it, but it is gated where nobody can drive in and out of it.
Right. But it still invites people to walk right on through from the thirteen hundred units into Brookwood. We don't want that. We want to be separate.
I'll just find it a gate.
I understand. We don't want a gate. We want it, we want to keep the barrier with the trees, and that's what I'm asking, if there are any other way to figure this out for emergencies besides the three entrances you already have. It's unbelievable to me. So, so the question is, do we need this? I'd like to take it off the list.
So the clarification with staff, then if this, where the sliver shown, there will be no buffer, the trees will be cut down, correct?
That's right. It'll look like a road. It'll look like a road with, with a gate.
So as we've, as we've done in other developments, it can be done so that it's not paved. It can be a, a grass paver type situation. The ordinance is very clear to me and staff that if you have more than seventy-five homes with only one point of access, that that second point of access is required. We've allowed that to be an emergency access. We've also talked with Chief Poole about the reverse being true. Brookwood is a one-point-three-mile-long dead-end road, so the, the emergency access both ways would be beneficial. Again, seventy-five homes is, is in the UDO. I don't see a way around that, other than a text amendment. But the chief is here, we talked about it a little bit today, and he can give you his perspective, I'm sure, as well.
So, chief, can we, can you turn a hook and ladder truck on a road that's thirty-four feet wide?
I don't know.
On a right turn? Yeah, it's not, it's, the logging trucks aren't acceptable to go in. I don't know why, we can have fire trucks go through.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, to address the mercy access. So to, to tailor on what Jeff said during plan review, we were, we understood that there were going to be seventy-five homes that only had one entrance. And I agree with what the gentleman said about the age of Brookwood and them having one entrance. However, in the time that development has improved, that we stress to have multiple means of access to a certain number of homes. And so since it exceeds seventy-five homes, we agreed with Jeff's plan of having the secondary access from there. Also with council, with council member, Matthews of blocking the access outside of emergency traffic. A little bit of history, if you'll remember, the Swift Creek subdivision plan, we had talked about a secondary means through colonial heights due to the railroad track being a hindrance of that nature too. So we dealt with this similar situation in a close proximity to this neighborhood. So as far as turning an apparatus around, no, that would not be the intention. The intention would be to access those seventy-five homes through that emergency lane if needed. Uh, and again, I, I'll defer to Jeff on as far as the planning or code side of it, but during the plan process, that is something that we noted.
Are we talking about seventy-five homes in Brookwood?
No.
Or where?
We're talking about, there are seventy-five homes that are only accessed by a single point.
Those on the backside of the, that's south, well, I guess it's north.
Correct.
East side of the property.
So my question is, why not reduce the number of homes or make another road somewhere and leave Brookwood out of it? That's what I'm asking.
From an emergency service standpoint, that's, that's outside of my relevancy. What, what we're looking at was what the proposed site was, that there are over seventy-five homes with a single point of access. And so we had agreed with the planning department that an emergency access point try to be determined in case we had to access that area for any, any unforeseen reason.
So what's, what would be three reasons why you need to access these roads?
Question. What is your jurisdictional requirement to service these roads, this neighborhood, which was in Garner? That makes sense. And then Brookwood, which isn't even in our ETJ?
Correct. So Wayne County's, Wayne County's based on closest station response. It just depends on what the closest station is and those accesses. But because this proposed development is inside the town, that is where, because we sit on the technical review committee and help the town assess emergency operations.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that your jurisdiction is different than the town's jurisdiction.
Yes.
So if I can ask the chief, what, give me three examples of emergencies where you need to come through Brookwood and you couldn't go through that road over there?
Uh, three emergencies, I would use natural disasters could, could determine three, so you could have a hurricane where you have flooding, you could have trees down, there could be some type of power situation, there could be utilities issues such as gas line ruptures and things like that. So I would, our basic premise would be on, if you're looking for three, those would be three that, right off the bat, I would say could be potential barriers.
Sure. So in Brookwood, with only one access out, for sixty years, we've had hurricanes, we've had trees down, we haven't had any natural disasters with the, natural gas, because we don't have natural gas. Brookwood, Fairview Fire Department came in and helped cut up our tree when it crossed over the road. We didn't need access into someone else's property in order to get out of Brookwood with our one drive. We had the fire department come in and help us for that one thing.
And, and we do the same thing, but again, when you're planning subdivisions, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, plans and codes and conditions changed to try to improve those situations over the years, and that's, that's where we are now. We, we have had issues in subdivisions that have single points of access. It's not just relative to Garner, it's relative to any community receiving the type of growth that we're seeing. So it is, it's trying, trying to learn from our mistakes of the past. I'm glad you haven't had any access issues in Brookwood. There have been many points of access issues in, in single point neighborhoods in our area.
I appreciate all your comments.
Yes, sir.
Just my feeling is that Brookwood must be left alone. We don't, we don't want other people helping us, and we don't want to help actually have access to have other people come into our property. It's like a natural park in there, and we just want to preserve it as long as we can. Having an emergency exit, asking emergency to come into Brookwood, I just, I just don't feel really good about it at all. So anyway, I can already see on, on that map, if they drew another road from the middle point to the one on the right, there'd be a second road there, and then there'd be two roads instead of one. So I think there's more than one way to skin the cat, and I'd love to have you guys look it over before you approve this thing and see if we can get that sliver road off the, the plan, and so one of our neighbors can buy that land back from Joy Parrot, and everything will be co-pastetic. Also, I want to introduce Ken Noel. He's here, also a Brookwood resident, who had some issues about the border's on here, so I want you to talk for a minute. But thank you so much. Appreciate your time. I really do, it's good to see you guys. Appreciate you responding.
Well, we customarily take a recess about now, but I think we'll go ahead and hear from you, sir.
Uh, Ken Noel, 2200, 2229 Woodnow, I'm about in the middle of that northern border there. Uh, as, as part of the conversations with the Timmons Group and the developer on the buffer, we understand there's a twenty-five foot setback, don't touch it, don't grade it, put up the, a nice pretty orange fence. Our concern is, you put up that orange fence, you grade, trees of a certain size are going to be damaged, the health of those trees are going to be damaged by any work within the drip line of that tree. So if that tree is five, six feet away from the twenty-five foot setback line and you start grading right next to it, that tree isn't going to last very long. Okay? That's pretty much known. So in conversations with, that's where we came up with thirty-five feet and the agreement to do the, the tree survey in order to try to protect some of those more substantive trees. The UDO calls out the fifty-foot buffer to be, that's where you're supposed to be limiting, what's it called, screening. You're supposed to provide for adequate screening between two adjoining neighborhoods. And while we've got natural screening, been there for forty, fifty years, it's in pretty good shape and it screams really well, and we, we're just trying to keep as much of that as we possibly can. And we think that, that can be done without a, a great undue burdens on the developer to, to make sure that happens. And again, we appreciate the conversation back and forth to kind of make that situation better. So we would like to see the thirty-five foot, you know, in there and the tree survey requirement to make sure that we can maintain, you know, the larger trees for sure. That was, that's pretty much it. I do have a question on your access dilemma. What are the limiting factors? If I understand correctly, there are seventy-five homes? So I don't know what you're at, that's only limited to one access. Can't be much more than seventy-five. Is it really a hundred and twenty? So that secondary road that you talked about would provide another means of egress, and the last single road would, would reduce it to less than seventy-five, I would assume by simple math. So maybe there's another way to solve this development's problem on this development's property.
Yes.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sure enough. Okay. I think that covers everybody who wanted to, to speak. Am I right on that? Let's see, anybody else? Okay. Anybody else want to answer? Counsel, what's your pleasure? Um, I'm prepared to close the meeting.
What if we have questions still?
Well.
We get a recess?
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I do need to enter this in. These are conditions we're trying to, so.
We tell you what.
We do approve.
Sign it and date it before you give it to them.
And that address, that, those conditions addresses what Mr. Noel just talked about, correct?
Correct. It increases if the thirty-five feet to the twenty-five foot.
Very good.
Okay.
Question about these, these points of access, and I remember when we adopted that years ago, if you've got two driveways coming in here, trying to figure out how we got down to one point of access, and you've got two roads coming from 401, and is, is the one from the apartment complex going to tie into this? Will there be three points of access? I don't know. Would the road coming into the apartment multifamily connect to one of these roads? I'm assuming it will, but I'm, I'm telling you something's when you consume. But I mean, it looks like we've got two points of access. I see two driveways off 401. I'm trying to figure out where the one comes in.
It's, it's internal to the site right here, where everything passed here has one point. There could be, there would be in the future a second one here, but a stub does not qualify. When three is required, a stub can qualify, but otherwise, two need to be active for more than seventy-five. So it's, it's this point right here, that's the critical pinch.
Question, Mr. Matthews?
Uh, no, sir, not me.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, anything else?
I see the pinch, but I still see two access points. I've, I mean, trees could crawl across, fall across any part of the road and close down how the people could get out. I mean, I mean, using the tree theory, but I'm just thinking, I'm just wondering how we sit there and we set in the Cleverdale subdivision, we do want Raleigh encroaching in a subdivision that's over fifty years old, and this is similar to what they're asking here, in my eyes. I'm just trying to be consistent. We didn't want Raleigh to access Randall Road or, uh, north, uh.
North of you.
North of you, thank you, in Cleverdale. So to me, we've got the same situation. That's just gray. That's all I got for right now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay.
We'll take a recess in a minute. And come back and ask?
Yep, absolutely. That's what I've got planned. Yeah, okay. All right. It's nine-ten. We'll take about a ten-minute recess and come back and finish up any unfinished business and close this out. Thank you. Appreciate it. Ten minutes. It's up now to the council. I'm going to give council a few minutes to, uh, discuss and make any observations they want, and then see if we're ready for, for a motion on this matter this evening. So I'll start, um, I'll start over here to my left with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
General observation, comments.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of observations, and I did state some earlier. I think, uh, this president's got... I think, uh, this precedent's got started a few months back with another, another major project, but having developers have that great dialogue with the peoples in the neighborhood, getting that input and becoming good neighbors as we expand out. And I think we've seen a good example of that here tonight and congratulations on that. And congratulations to all the neighbors for participating. It's easy to butt heads, but when you sit down and realistically as adults and property owners and developers and work out issues and put them to rest, that's a good example for other projects all over this county, as a matter of fact, not only in Garner. So congratulations to both of you on that. And it's going to be a, it's just a sign of the growth we've got coming in Wake County and it's coming and I'm so glad we've got that southern loop coming through. That's going to help a lot on that traffic. We're not seeing it now, but as this thing moves forward and the, and the widening of the roads, uh, I think this project will wind up being good. I like the project, there's going to be some good homes for people and a lot of amenities and hopefully good neighbors to the folks already living over there. So congratulations again on working together and I like to see this project move forward. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Instead of going in singles, I want to go back and forth. I'll go to Mr. Vance now.
Uh, I agree with what, with what Mr. Matthews just said in reference to the coordination and the, the public involvement was really, uh, great in my opinion and how the, how the, uh, the neighborhoods and the community just worked together to solve a number of the issues prior to coming before the council with still concerns, but yet and still it was minimized to what we are dealing with right now. And, uh, thank you for that, that team effort, that, that working together and pulling everything together there. And that's all I have for it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Coming back to my left, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, question for staff. I'm just, uh, this, this emergency entrance, exit, whatever, access point. We talked about it being a 75-lot subdivision. Is it a 75-lot subdivision or is it 75 lots within a subdivision? Because I bet we can find several of those around town. I'm just curious. My, the one I think I was, I think of Eagle Ridge, which only has two access points. If trees came down to one entrance, you only have one access point.
So I'm not sure when, when that was adopted in the UDO.
Mid to late 90s.
Yeah. All I can speak to is that I know since I came here and was working with Brad, this is how.
It's connected to South Mountain through the back, I believe.
So there is, there is a, yeah, there are stubs in the back of Eagle Ridge, so that would be the third. And so there is that provision that the third one can be a stub. So there is a stub to that property to the south. We were just looking at that the other day.
Again, is it 75-lot subdivision or 75 lots within a subdivision? To me, that's the difference.
So part, part of what each phase technically is, can be considered a subdivision because they get platted separately. Um, and this one is set up so that that is its own phase. So.
But we're not approving any phases, we're approving everything.
You are.
Just, you know, if you volley one to me, I'll volley one back.
Sure.
Um, I just, I just, I don't, I mean, I understand the point, but I feel quite confident that when the multifamily comes in, there'll be a connection to this second entrance over here, we'll say the second from the south, so there'll be another access point. So, uh, I just, if, if they've worked all this time with the neighbors and that's the only thing your neighbors got is a grape, I don't really have an issue with it of taking, of, of putting a condition in where that's not required. It's just me. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Ms. Berger?
Hey. If we, I don't know who I'm directing this question to, but if we put a condition in to approve it not requiring that sliver, then what happens then?
Well, apparently you're violating the UDO.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Let's stay up here.
The way we've been reading it and interpreting it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, I have other questions. We have not addressed anything related to open space on this property and have some questions. Who's going to answer open space questions? And we have this outstanding legal question on the impact of the development document that accompanied this application and what adherence there is from that document. How bound are we to that? The, the attorney doesn't know what I'm talking about.
I'm trying to understand you.
The development, the development document that was on the shared drive that outlined the entire development from Timmins, is that not part of this proceeding? Jeff? So they submitted a development document, right?
You're, you're talking about the booklet, correct? Yes.
What legal relationship does that document have to what we are voting on tonight?
That is, that is basically your development guidelines, your UDO rules for this particular zoning district.
Right. And that's the one that includes going up to 1,600 units. So there's another issue right there. So if in that document, they propose stricter standards than our UDO, are they not held to those? Okay. So I have an open space question for the developer. Who's going to answer an open space question?
Either their site designer or we can answer it if it, if we can from a review standpoint.
You want me to introduce myself?
Yes.
Beth Blackman, 113 Lager Lane, Garner, North Carolina, with Timmins Group.
Well, in one of these tables, when it talks about open space and use, there's a category that says recreation and usable open space.
Yes.
And then there's this that outlines the open and common space, correct?
Yes.
There is some land on the other side of these railroad tracks, correct? And there are listed about 3.62 acres that are listed as part of that buffer that are listed as usable recreation space.
So your UDO allows environmental feature areas, new buffers, wetlands and floodplains to count as recreation and usable open space irregardless of where they're located?
Does it allow it to count as open space?
It does.
Or recreational and usable open space?
It is allowed to count as open space.
It, okay. It is allowed to be used as open space?
Yes. Environmentally sensitive areas.
But they describe it in their document as recreational and usable open space, is that not a higher standard than our just using it as open space?
We don't make the designation really. They're, they're.
But they did in their document.
Right. And they're saying, I guess.
They're saying it's usable.
Everything that is not common space, which is the stuff that doesn't qualify as recreation and usable open space, is called out as recreation and usable open space because that is the way it's referred to in the PRD. It's not called just open space, it's called recreation and usable open space.
Is that true? I don't, I don't remember the term usable open space.
I'd have to go back and look at the verbatim words.
And it's either, it is either in the PRD section or in the chapter four section that talks about open space.
Are we? Are we, are we finished?
No, I'd like an answer to my question.
Well, I think, I think they are trying to answer that.
Jeff is looking to see the verbatim word. I, I'm, I can't stand here and quote the UDO verbatim, so.
If it crosses the track, can it be considered usable?
It can be, if it's an.
Encourage people to cross the pedestrians.
Right. But it can be open space if it's an environmentally sensitive area.
Right. I understand that.
So, so all of the areas that are either used for recreation or are environmentally sensitive can be used for open space. What doesn't qualify, they have listed as common area because there are some dimensional requirements and things of that nature on open space as well. So like little narrow slivers that are under 50 feet wide, for instance, would not qualify for open space. So they've called it common area.
Right. That's a different section under this, in this document. Railroad right-of-way and common areas are listed as separate from recreation and usable open space. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay. I believe Mr. Trezenberg perhaps has found something that hopefully will answer the
So perhaps to confuse things further, as far as exact terms that are used within it, um, 6.12 says common recreation and open space. So again, the way I've understood, the way I have understood this when this was drafted, they may not have used the exact same terminology as the open space section which preceded this, but it is defined as common recreation and open space. So the recreation component was always a little more hidden in the open space section of the UDO. If you read the open space section in the UDO, it's very much dominated by the environmental pieces, but then there is a, a fifth bullet, I think, that refers to passive recreation. So I believe when they wrote this, they at least wanted to make it a little more clear that rather than just open space, it was supposed to, it was supposed to include recreation and that should have some, some weight. So I think this was just a better, hopefully a better clarification.
Recreation should be accessible, right?
Right. But it does say common recreation and open space, not common recreational open space. It's common recreation and open space.
Right.
So if that would be best clarified in the document, we can.
Well, I mean, I guess, it's fine. I just, they've class, they've made their own classification. So, fun. I have a list of outstanding issues and I'll list them because my motion will be that we continue this so that we can incorporate these matters that have come before us today. One is in the discussion of the Swift Creek management area, we didn't, there were a lot of I-don't-knows and I'm not sure when it comes to this density issue. And there are repercussions, legal, potential legal repercussions for the town if we violate that management plan. I would also like to review, since it was presented as evidence, the traffic impact And along with this issue of the Swift Creek land management plan, there's some impervious surface questions and percentages that aren't immediately clear depending on interpretation and on what is commercial and not commercial and what is 50% versus 70%. We have a long list of conditions from Brookwood that they would like included. I think it merits staff and the attorney integrating those into a final proposal to come before us. There was only very recent DOT conversations related to U-turn sign, speed changes. We also have the 2019 traffic numbers coming in later this month that it would be wise for us to include in sort of assessing the traffic impacts of that whole area down there. We have transportation meetings later this month on some of these major corridors that I think it would be wise for us to incorporate in the making of this decision. There's the sliver road issue. There's also the issue of, we have not gotten to, which is assessing the financial impact on the town. Manager indicated, uh, a few years ago, we used to do assessments on the financial impact of the town. You can make an assumption that a development will break even based on the services that need to be provided to it. I'd like to actually be data-driven with regards to what the fiscal impact of a development, particularly of this size, would be. That's just sound fiscal management and planning. Those are my 11 issues as part of my motion to continue this until, what, first meeting in October.
Okay. Counsel, you've heard the motion by Councilmember Dallinger to, in essence, continue this hearing in regards to issues that he has concerns about. I believe you said a set date.
The first meeting in October.
First meeting in October, okay. Uh, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Is that enough time for staff to integrate and look at those?
I have to defer that to planning. Who's going to be doing most of the research? Is that enough time?
The list that came from Brookwood and.
Have y'all vetted the list? Is that enough time to vet the list that came from Brookwood and look into some of these other things?
Yeah. We have, we haven't seen it, but I was part of a conversation earlier today, so I'm kind of aware of what those, what those were. So that's plenty of time.
It would be good for you all to see that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's not a second to the motion, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Is the council now prepared to make a motion on the original two issues? The first one being, I believe, the rezoning motion to be followed by the site plan approval.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one question about the slither, just a clarification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And maybe the attorney would need to get involved with it. Is this where, and the property owners would be agreeable too, since we have, you guys have worked together on some things, could we do, and we used the term a temporary blocked off emergency entrance to those apartment complexes or build, then maybe transfer that emergency entrance over to another side and take that one away? Is that something workable? I'm just offering this up. Do I need to do that? Give Mr. Attorney.
Sliver road, yeah. I brought up an idea.
That slither we were questioning about, that if it was agreement on both sides to make it a temporary emergency entrance, but we could go ahead and block it off like the fire department does till the apartments are ready to be developed and when that, at that time shift it from that entrance over there, which would give them that emergency entrance and, and take it off and that way they could do what they want to do.
Um, let's let, let me let Mr. Roberts speak to that issue, please, sir.
The apartments will be built as part of phase one. So the apartments and the access for the apartments and the connection for the apartments onto the main road will be done in phase one. So it will be done prior to that section back in, at the ones in Brookwood.
So is a way y'all could work that out, I guess, my question is.
It is, we, that will be done first. So that, that access to the apartments, so there will be three driveway connections or the connection for the apartments will be made, um, prior to ever getting back to the section of where the 75-lot issue is.
So is it possible to do what I'm suggesting here, if you two could get together?
Well, if we won't need, if, if we did that part first, we could probably, we could do that, but it won't be necessary because it won't be built. If you understand what I'm saying. That section where the houses are, the 75-home plus, that area will be basically undisturbed, you know, before the apartments are built. Apartments will all be done first. I mean, just to do what you're saying, we can have to go back there and build that road, but there's nothing, no other development in that area proposed as part of phase one.
Well, I guess my thoughts were, since it's just really an emergency entrance and it don't have to be paved.
Right.
Can that be worked with where if it was, I'm just trying to work it out here, just trying to work it out, that if it, if stipulated in the conditions that you guys have worked together, so stipulated, that it would go away within X amount of time to do what you want to do and let them put that emergency entrance somewhere else on that property. That's where I'm trying to go here. Is that a workable thing?
We could, we could show it on paper, but I don't, I don't think it would ever be built. I think, I think the other, uh, access points would be installed prior to ever getting to needing it built.
So what I'm thinking won't work?
I don't think so. On paper, it works, but I just don't think it would be constructed in that order.
Go ahead, Mr. Jordan. Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
No, I was just thinking about this. The reason we even have the sliver road is because Joy Parrott owns that little sliver among all that property. So my question is, if this was developed and there never was that sliver, how would you guys deal with this emergency road? Where would the other emergency road go if there never was that sliver to start with?
That's where I'm trying to get to here.
Yeah, there's a workable way without involving Brookwood, is what I'm asking. Because just pretend it was never there to start with. That's just, it's an anomaly that that thing is a little sliver that came off that huge piece of property. But if it wasn't there, where would you have this emergency road that everyone seems to want or need or whatever? How would you do it? My suggestion is to build another little side road between the middle blue part and the blue port to the right, just make a second road, and now it's got two roads out of that spot instead of one. So you're crossing over the green spot one more time. Because you've got one main road going over that green spot that goes to the third blue part, just have another one parallel further down there, the two cul-de-sacs, just tie those together, and you got it made. And then that way you don't have to involve Brookwood. We're not asking to be involved. It should be their problem, not our problem. It's our feeling.
Okay.
Thanks, anyway.
We really need to wrap this up. I recognize this gentleman here who seems, I'm not sure we've heard from him yet.
You have not, but I have been sworn in. Scott Copeland, Principal of RST Development. Thank you very much, and I will be very brief. The purpose of the emergency access road is dictated not by us. It's not our desire to have it. It was told to us early on by staff that we had to have it. So we went out to create that opportunity. As you are probably aware, Ms. Parrott is one of the sellers of the larger parcel, and I have that parcel, that sliver of land, under contract for this exact purpose. Our goal, in the spirit of cooperation throughout this whole process, is that we have provided a great deal of compromise, if you will, of middle ground, and I urge the same on the other side, is that we're doing only what is being required of us by your UDO, and candidly, it serves both ways. God forbid there's an event in your neighborhood, and I recognize that it hasn't happened, and I hope it doesn't, but that road, that emergency access goes both ways. So it's a safety for everybody. And our goal is to minimize its appearance. I understand clearly what the challenge is, and we will do our very best to continue to work with the community to minimize that. But I just want to state clearly that we do have it under contract, that parcel for this very purpose, because we were directed to do so by the staff, because it is part of the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for that clarification. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, counsel, are you ready to take action on this? The first motion by Mr. Dellinger died for lack of a second. What is your pleasure as it relates to...
Point of inquiry, so did we resolve this issue or not?
Sir?
Did we resolve this?
No.
Okay. Well, I'd like to reintroduce my motion that we continue this to October 5th so we can consider this public safety matter, along with a set of other legal concerns.
Mr. Dellinger, I'm not going to recognize your subsequent motion until other council members have had a chance to weigh in on whether or not they're ready for a motion for the original request. Okay? We gave you a chance on the one motion, okay? If counsel's not ready, I'll go back to you.
Can I ask Mr. Roberts a question? Just curious. Notice a walking trail here, right at the breakpoint, there's a walking trail which goes to an open space, open area, which is at the backside of where the multifamily is. The red dotted line around the green circle at the south end of where the apartments is going?
Gotcha.
Okay. That's just a natural area left open, just a flat area, correct?
I believe that's the proposed Stormwater Pond area.
That is going to be a Stormwater Pond?
For the apartments.
Okay. Just curious what it was. I didn't know. All right, that's just a question that I had. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Is counsel prepared for a motion? Otherwise, I'll go back to Dellinger.
I'm ready to make a motion on the rezoning.
All right. I recognize you, Ms. Singleton.
And let's remember that we're making, well, any motion that is made is based off the information that's in here. So I know Mr. Dellinger, he's referencing that book. We're not approving the book. We're approving what's in front of us. The book don't count. The book was like promotional material.
Question, isn't that material considered as part of...
I don't have any idea what it is.
Mr. Trezen, is this development book competent evidence being submitted to us? Is it part of the legal considerations that we have to make with regards to this development?
It is the zoning guidelines for the development.
Zoning guidelines, but the specifics are in the motion, in the proposed motions, like the number of lots. I think you can do 1,700, it specifically says in a condition they can do total of 1,320. It specifically says that in the motion. I mean, it says they can't do this and can't do that. It doesn't say you can go back to the book. We're not approving the book. We're approving what's sitting here and in front of us. The book may be part of it, but the book is not what we're asked to approve. We're being asked to approve what's sitting in front of us, not the book. The book is guidelines. The book is not what we're approving, because that is modified since then, correct?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand the question.
We're not approving what's in the book. We're approving what's in front of us. The book may state something different, and we've had this with other subdivision. This is nothing new. We've done this many, many times. It's nothing new. Well, the number in the book of lots and the number that we approved were different because that's what we, the number that's allowed to be built is what is in the motion, not is what's in the book.
Whatever you put in the motion...
Controls.
Controls. And then the book would go back and get revised based on that.
Right. Okay.
If there's something in conflict.
Gotcha. So Mayor, I move that we, in regards to PD-Z-20-01, the US 401 Assemblage, find it consistent with the comprehensive plan and approve. I move the town council accept staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as our own. Therefore, move the town council adopt ordinance number 2020-4078, approving rezoning requests PD-Z-20-01, as it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow adequate buffers and usable open space set out to preserve and protect adjacent housing stock, excuse me, allow the development of an appropriate density of housing in the area which it is located, and allow for the conservation and preservation of natural features and green space to promote recreational activities.
With the addition of the conditions offered by the proponent tonight?
With the addition of the conditions offered by the developer tonight, conditions that were approved and given consideration by the neighborhood, the adjoining neighborhood.
I have that document right here, my hand signed by Mr. Roberts. Okay. So that's part of the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who did I hear, second? Mr. Vance and/or? Yeah, Mr. Vance. Okay, I'm going to give counsel a few minutes for any further discussion before I call for the vote, but I think most of what needs to be said has probably been said. But counsel, before we vote, any further comments, observations?
The conditions? I haven't gotten a list of the conditions.
I'm sorry.
I haven't gotten a list of the conditions.
I'm not sure what, I certainly have these lists of conditions here.
I have not seen them. I can't prove them if I have not seen them.
Okay, other council members care to weigh in before we vote? Okay. Mr. Dellinger's had a chance to see those. Okay.
And close the public hearing.
Sorry about that. Close the public hearing. Yep. Didn't think we'd ever get a close. All right. A motion is properly before, it's been made and seconded. Discussion has ended. So counsel, what is your pleasure? All those in favor of voting for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion, please say no.
No.
Okay. Motion carries by four to one vote. That's the motion on the rezoning. We now turn our attention to the second portion of this. I don't have it right in front of me, but I'll entertain a motion from counsel on the site plan.
To clarify with Mr., our attorney, Mr. Baggett, the conditions on the paper all went with the zoning conditions, so they go with the zoning period.
I'm going to add it to this vote also.
Okay.
So some conditions relate more to the zoning than the site plan, some relate more to the site plan. So the conditions will apply to both.
Good.
Okay.
Mayor, in regards to PD-MP-20-01, US 401 Assemblage, I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own and found the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14. D. Therefore, approve PD-MP-20-01, the US 401 Assemblage with the six conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared for staff, and also the additional conditions that were presented tonight by Mr. Roberts that had been discussed and considered and approved by the neighboring community.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. A motion properly made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll give Mr. Matthews credit for the second. Again, I'll give counsel a brief period of time if there's further discussion needed on this particular motion. Hearing done. All in favor of the motion that is properly before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition to the motion, please say no.
No.
Okay. And they is noted. Motion carries by a vote of four to one, and it is approved. I want to thank you all for your indulgence. It's been a long process, and I do appreciate the courtesy extended by all and the spirit in which the discussion and our disagreements were made. I think it's an example of, in some ways, how government ought to work. And so it's a little messy at times perhaps, but I commend both the developers and those who work with the developers, the neighbors, and all those who were involved and for your showing up here this evening. Strange to look out there and see everybody wearing masks, but that's the day and time we're in. So at any rate, I appreciate all of your indulgence as here to see you. We're not finished with our meeting yet, but I know some of you probably would like to leave. So with that, I'll thank you for your time. Okay, while they are recording, counsel, I will draw your attention back to our agenda. And I believe next up is new business. We'll leave Mr. Jones. Our Public Works Director is up next. Thank you for your patience in waiting, Mr. Jones.
Get the right one here.
Okay.
So we're here, good evening, good, members of mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're here to talk to you this evening about the FY '20 pavement preservation program. You may remember, maybe a couple of years back, we came to you with a consultant who had done, completed a study for us of our entire road network, which we've been working off of now. Since that time, I think Mr. Johnson and his team have been doing our resurfacing, and we're here to talk about the pavement preservation. So really, what is pavement preservation in a word? And another way of saying that is we're here to try to extend the life of the current roadway. Oftentimes, when you think about resurfacing, and Mr. Johnson can weigh in here if you'd like, it's really about rebuilding and repaving. This is about preserving and doing techniques that will extend that life of the roadway. So we've got two projects here we'll talk about this evening before you. The first is our street micro-surfacing and crack seal project. So, and let me back up, our consultant, all the work that they provided us, what we're here to discuss before you tonight is a result of that plan and effort. So back in June 19th, earlier this year, we issued an RFP for our micro-surfacing and crack seal. We held a pre-bid meeting on June 25th, at which we had two contractors attend, and then July 15th, those proposals were due. We did receive two different bids in. You can see on the left there, highlighted in the gold, is Slurry Pavers bid, which was the apparent low bidder, and then Boxley Materials Company as well, give us another bid. So from that, we had to go back and do a little bit of work and some adjustments that we'll talk about. I kind of got my slides backwards. We'll go back and talk about. So we had to go back and work with the lowest bidder, which is within regulation, and make an adjustment within the line items. The line item you see highlighted in red there was where we adjusted down, and then we adjusted the number up, the $8,000 unit price up. The bottom number, however, remained the same. Here's where we get out of order just a little bit, and I'll go ahead and kind of show you this. So this is that adjusted bid tab. As you see, we have about $297,000 on the micro-surfacing only, and then about $93,000 in the crack seal, which will go down in advance everywhere we micro-surface. As you can see there, the bottom number remains the same. Any questions on how we came to that?
Questions, counsel?
Before we move on?
Questions?
None. So here, and I think you've got most of this in your packet, these are our street names. We've got two columns of roads here. Essentially, not everywhere is an entire street, so this outlines the street name we're working on, where we'll begin at a block by block, and then where we will end. So we've got quite a number of lists here of streets. I will tell you, these streets are represented throughout town, not just in one small concentrated area. So they are happening kind of throughout town, and overall, this project will include about 13 miles of roadway, centerline miles of roadway. So this will do the entire street section. Like I said, the micro-surfacing will consist of a crack seal in front to fill significant cracks, and then we'll come back and overlay with what I think some of you who've been around for a few years may remember, the town used to engage in some slurry seal work. This is very similar to that. It's not the exact, but it is similar. We're here before you tonight, if there are no other questions, to ask you to authorize the manager to enter into a contract with Slurry Pavers in the amount outlined on the agenda, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Jones?
I have one.
Okay.
Forrest, I didn't see it on here, but it went pretty quickly. Is Harper Street on the list anywhere to be worked on? I'm getting complaints from people who live in the area that it's in terrible shape.
I would, I don't have every street memorized, committed to memory on this list.
Right.
We could go back and look and see if popular is on there.
Harper.
Harper, Harper. I'm sorry, Harper. I didn't understand you.
Short street, a very narrow street off of Garner Road, next, between Penny Street and Center Street, but it does...
Yeah. I'm familiar with the street there. I'm just trying to run down that list. I don't think it is.
I see it on the second page.
Yeah, there it is, there it is. I'm sorry. Second page, Middle Road, left-hand column, so Harper Street along Garner Road. Yes, it is on there.
I haven't seen, I believe you, I just don't see it.
I'm sorry. Let me move the mouse for you there.
Gotcha, okay.
There you go. So we're beginning at Garner Road and going to where our maintenance ends on Harper.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Concise explanation of the, you know, how the streets got on here. I remember seeing a payment analysis and study. Does it reflect back to that?
It does. It reflects exactly back to that. So this is a direct result of that work that was done back about two years ago, and so we're coming forth, and everything on here represents what we talked about then in quite a bit of detail.
Thank you.
Timeframe, when this will all be done? Did you say that already?
So our timeframe on this project, upon your approval this evening, should be done by the end of this calendar year.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Jones?
And we'll be able to do roughly 13, as Forrest noted, 13 centerline miles that'll get, their life of the road will get extended, where we repaved this year between three and four miles, and this is a whole lot cheaper.
It is, but I would say this pairs nicely, which was the decision we spent a lot of time talking about a number of years ago. With our current, with our previous program... With our current, with our previous program, we were solely using the one tool in the toolbox to maintain our roads, which is a good one by all means. However, it's one that only will take you so far because of the costs involved. With this model, we are hoping to anticipate, we're hoping to touch anywhere between 10 and 15 miles of roadway between the various tools we're using on an annual basis. And, you know, currently, we have around 105 miles, centerline miles of road in town. So, in theory, we would hope to be getting at all of our roads with some type of treatment much, much sooner, help extend that life. And there's a number of communities around that are doing this, not only locally here in Wake County, across North Carolina, but across the country, and everyone that's been doing it for any length of time will tell you it is worth the investment. Stick with the plan, it pays off in the long run.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Question. How long does it extend, kind of defer, or defer the maintenance on these roads? How many years can we squeeze out of doing the micro?
So, you're probably looking in the seven to 10-year range, and it's going to vary, you know, there's, it's kind of like the gentleman earlier referenced in his traffic study. It varies so much with, is it Harper Street that's, you know, got low volume of traffic? That could be longer versus another kind of major carrier in our neighborhood could be less. So, it's hard to speak in absolutes. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Are you ready to act on this, counsel? Let's see. Did I preempt you there on the?
No, you're fine, I might have. Quit talking. You're, I'm done with that presentation, I'm sorry.
Need a motion on this one?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the manager to approve the contract with Slurry Pavers to perform the FY20 pavement preservation.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded by Ms. Behring, okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, no? There is none, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I've got one more, and we're treating them separately, because there are two, two different projects, and two different companies, so.
Yep.
All right. So, this is our pavement rejuvenation, which again is still a pavement preservation. All right. So, here, kind of followed a pretty similar timeline. We went out for, looking at bids on rejuvenation work. Some of you who were on council when the report was done may remember some talk about what they referred to as the Pink Street. So, this is that project. I can tell you Kerry's done it around here locally, and I think Mr. Johnson had this treatment performed in front of his house just a few months ago. Again, it's a lot less cost, and we issued our RFPs, request for proposals, on June 30th, and then we had them do back on July 28th. In this case, we own, this was our street list. Here, a smaller list of some roads. And then, we received one bid back on this, and it came in at $57,152. There is, the question came up when we were reviewing it, why not go back out and bid? Because we bid this as a service project, it is not required for us to go back out and have multiple bids or try to gain multiple bids. So, and that answer came from finance. So, we are, we are not bound to go back out and redo that. Again, upon your approval this evening, we're asking that you authorize the manager to enter into this contract with pavement technology and authorize him to do that. And again, we're hoping to have this done by the end of this calendar year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Jones on this bid tab?
I will, I will make this one comment before I go much further. Remember, we're here, we talked about FY20 bid, we're on this project. So, Mr. David Beck, our finance director, will bring back a, or this money was budgeted in FY20, which is already closed. He will bring back a budget amendment at a later time to cover these funds, but we are within budget from what was budgeted.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, hearing no questions, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council authorize the manager to approve the contract for pavement technology incorporated to perform the FY20 pavement rejuvenation.
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Behring, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Thank you.
End is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Guess you can go now. Okay, counsel, I believe we are down to item J, committee reports. We have at least one, I believe. I'll recognize either Mr. Dellinger or Mr. Vance.
Yes, yes, the Human Resource Committee, you have met last week and fills several numbered positions, and these are the following individuals that we recommend reappointing. Clint Farrell, Lamara Jones, Anita Powell to the Board of Adjustment, and appointing Duane Tab to the Garner Veterans Advisory Board. And recommend reappointing Maung Ping Yoo, if I apologize, mispronounced her name, and Ms. Ernestine Durham to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and appointing Autumn Bean and Dreis Darlington to the Parks and Rec Committee. For the, next, we have reappointing Herbertina Johnson, Sharon Verity, Verity, and Ann Morgan to the Senior Citizens Council, Citizens Advisory Committee. And there's another we are under discussion about at this moment, but those three would like to reappoint to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. That's the end of the report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. I assume you make that in the form of a motion that counsel approve this.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded by Mr. Dellinger. Any comments, questions, counsel?
Quick comment. I just want to say that, to thank you to Stella and Ashley for working to get all this interview set up and timely. Again, I think Mr. Vance and I were just very, very impressed with the caliber of folks that are volunteering to serve on these committees. We've got some diversity in age ranges, and times in Garner, and all kinds of great stuff, and people are just really interested and excited to participate, and so it was actually, it's been a great experience to appoint these individuals, so. And thank you, Mr. Vance, too.
Yes, thank you for your, and thank the two of you for your service. I've served on that before. It is, it can be a little time-consuming at times, and it's nice when you have nice support back there, so.
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you for your good work.
I'd like to say also, thank you to the staff for the great work and working hard to pull us together, and Mr. Dellinger as well.
Let's see, did we vote on that? I believe we did, yeah.
Yes, they made the motion, and we need to vote on it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none? Okay. Thank you, okay. Manager reports.
All right, mayor, town council have a number of reports, we'll try to get through those. The first two are our standard reports we include from time to time. Garner Info, if you notice, one was like mulching, the dog parks, and we did get that work done, thanks to Public Works for doing that. You'll notice there are some signed complaints in there, and all of those have been taken care of, just didn't get updated prior to this being printed, but. Also, the building and permit reports in there. And item number three is the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Special Events Schedule, and Dr. Shaw is on teams with us, and also Matt Rory Lance, and we just want to speak to this and kind of give you a rundown where we are. As you know, the governor just introduced 2.5, Phase 2.5, and that has some provisions in it. It loosened up some things, but still some restrictions that would affect the way we typically do programming. And so, we have a list here, I gave you a handout at the break, that talks about some of the programs that we would typically offer, and what we're proposing to do, either virtual or as an alternative to those programs, in light of not being able to social distance and other precautionary measures we would have to put in place in order to hold those in a traditional fashion. So, I'm gonna call on Dr. Shaw, just if there's any one you want to highlight, and then we'll especially talk about some of the more major events also.
Okay, Dr. Shaw, please.
Good evening, mayor and council, hope you can hear me well. Thank you so much for taking time to review some of our programming that we have coming up available. We are excited about reopening our programming back up. This past weekend, we opened playgrounds and had a great response, of course. They were full Friday afternoon at 5:00 when they opened. So, special thanks to Public Works for their teams responsible for maintaining parks and getting our playgrounds open and available for us. Won't be before you too long, but there are a few programs that Mr. Dickerson shared about reopening. We've got adult and senior programming, returning, most of that being virtual programming that we'll continue with, and we'll offer outdoor classes for seniors and our adult fitness program. Nature and Outdoors, we'll continue with the boat house, and then continue offering virtual online programs for preschoolers, along with some of the environmental ed programs as well. Youth and adult athletics, youth athletics and programming, we are looking at offering clinics and small camps and contests that we can actually offer following governor's orders and DHHS guidelines regarding social distancing. So, we'll have that available for our sports as well. And then, we are seeking guidance on a couple of those. We've got good guidance as it relates to baseball and softball. We're still waiting on guidance regarding soccer, because we have some teams that are actually playing outside of this area, travel ball, so we're trying to get more guidance from DHHS on that, so we're awaiting information on those. And our cultural arts and events, we'll continue doing GPAC from home series there, and if you've not seen those yet, definitely go back and revisit, cultural arts center, we have a lot of good groups coming through there, and they'll continue with that. So, in essence, we are slowly reopening programming and looking to return, following the governor's orders, and what numbers we'll have as we continue down the road of reopening complete. And that covers our programming update, and then I'm waiting to discuss the event.
And I know you, you have been getting a lot of inquiries from our program partners about being able to access the fields and carry on with some of their games and practices, so I guess that opened it up for them somewhat. I don't know if it opened it all away.
Okay, are we ready for any questions of our counsel at this point? Do you have anything else you wanted to add, Dr. Shaw?
I have one question for Dr. Shaw while she's on. Do we have a date set yet for the Yergin meeting? The consultants?
I think we're working on that.
Okay.
We don't have a date set. Do you have any possible dates for the Yergin meeting?
Yes, you, we are coordinating that information, and it looks like the date's tentatively available with our consultants will be September 22nd, September 24th, or September 25th. So, I will work with Ms. Gibson to get that information out to you all in the morning, likely.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Shaw?
All right, she's, she's going to cover special events next, before she. You can go ahead, Sonya, with the special events.
Okay, so, as you all have heard, we are following closely the guidelines and recommendations from both the governor along with DHHS, and based on the mass gathering numbers that exist now, it will likely continue through the end of the year. We are recommending cancellation of our traditional town events, and this is mainly due to the fact that our attendance at all of our events exceed the mass gathering limits now, and unless they transition up to 1,000-plus people gathered in one space, then we would be unable to complete our traditional special events. So, what we're looking at doing is offering alternative events to some of those exit, some of those pre-existing events, such as our trick-or-treat trails event, typically have over 5,000 residents that attend that event. So, we're looking at this year possibly doing a drive-in movie at Lake Benson Park, limiting the number of cars that can participate in that event, so that we are following the guidelines. Staff has also come up with a potential pumpkin, pumpkin carving contest that will involve families decorating pumpkins from home and sharing those online with other viewers, and some type of competition behind that. In lieu of our light-up main, we are still looking at possibly trying to do our light-up event with the mayor lighting a tree and having Santa and some carolers be at the actual location, but that will be shown virtually and likely pre-recorded. Again, the parade will also be one of those events that draws more people, and we likely will not be able to accommodate. So, we are looking at doing alternate events for that as well, and the main one being a holiday concert with the Hallel sisters. And then, we're probably gonna also look at doing some pre-scheduled visits with Santa as we all social distance, as well as that. So, that's just a quick, brief overview on some alternative events that staff's been working on, knowing that we will likely not be able to have our traditional town events for the remainder of the year.
All right, any questions?
So, you didn't, they didn't specify the Veterans Day event, but I'm, I already realized that's over 50 people, so that's also, counsel.
The veterans committee will meet on the 18th, and our team there will let us know if they plan to do an event, but official guidance looks like they are not looking at having an event, but we'll see if they, if they come up with an alternative event for that day.
Fireworks. Possessed it before. You have fireworks the night before, out of school next day, anyway.
A question, since, you know, not doing the parade this year, and suddenly do like a recording thing, has there been any thought given to maybe having like Santa on a fire truck going through different neighborhoods on a schedule so people could come out and see him? And since they can't come together, maybe like he could ride through the neighborhoods? Matt Poon's not listening, chief. We get Santa on a fire truck, ride through Garner? I don't know. I mean, it's, we can talk about it, it's just, it's just sort of an idea to like get kids excited and stuff, and keep that Christmas spirit together and all that good stuff, I don't know.
We'll put that on the list as a consideration.
Okay. Anything else?
pertaining to that item?
I was gonna thank Dr. Shaw for her indulgence here. Okay, yeah, thank you, and yeah, we're ready for the next item.
Okay, I met with the residents at, on Country Club Drive, there's about, I think, five homes there, four homes there, and of course, you know, that Country Club Drive leads to Meadowbrook Golf Course, and they recently had some work done on the road. There's, the road's in bad shape, it's a private, private street, and there were some potholes they got fixed, and they got a contractor, got a couple of bids, and the contractor to go out and fix those. They didn't approach us about that first, I guess they didn't really realize that might be a prudent thing to do, but nevertheless... I guess they didn't really realize that might be a prudent thing to do, but, um, nevertheless, um, they had a lot of concerns about what was going to be happening out at Meadowbrook, you know, what was going to be the impact on the road, you know, was that going to be a main entrance and those type of things. And, um, we had a lot of good discussion. Um, I told them that I couldn't definitely, definitively answer some of their questions until we had a plan for Meadowbrook. I mean, part of our plan is to make Hebron maybe the main entrance, but I can't say that for sure until we can figure out what the circulation is going to be in the property. So, I showed them the concept plan and the creeks and some of the barriers and some of the, the thought process the council and the staff has to go through as we look to develop that property. So, they were very, very understandable about that. Um, and then, uh, the road being private, typically the property owners would share in any maintenance. So, um, as a goodwill gesture, you know, us being one of the major property owners, I offered to, uh, bring this, uh, bill back to council to see if you would entertain us participating in the potholes getting repaired. Um, the road, uh, we did an assessment of the road. Engineering went out and did an assessment of the road, and it would take in excess of probably $80,000 to rebuild the entire road. Uh, and I also explained that we don't want to put any major funds into the road until we figure out how it needs to be developed for the property. So, they understood that. So, the bill, um, was $3,400, and, um, they split it out to the residents, not, not quite equal because the one, the resident on the cul-de-sac had to pay a little extra share. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm recommending that the town participate, you know, in the $1,000 range. And, um, being that a lot of the vehicles do go in and out of there to access the park, the golf course, and, um, just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that or something you want to think about or whatever, um, just as a goodwill gesture. And then we'll have future conversations with them about the, the permanent, uh, development of the road and how it relates to the property.
Mr. Mayor, has this work already been done, Rodney?
It's already been done.
Now, was it, were the holes patched or they repaired? There's a big difference.
The holes were patched. Um, they were not saw cut like we typically would do.
Um, you know, that's kind of too late now. Uh, we probably would have done it a little bit different, but it's, you know, it's already been done and the money spent. I had, um, Mr. Jones go out and kind of look at it and just give an assessment about whether he thought a, it, a good job was done. And he thought for what was done, it was done properly. Um, it would have been better to cut, but likely if you had started cutting, you would have had to cut, and then a piece would have broke off. You would have probably had to cut another piece. So, it's, um, a lot of, um, a lot of cracking. And I did explain to them with, with the engineer that, you know, it's not just the volume that contributes to the deterioration of the road, but starting and stopping. So, some of the patches you're going to see are near the driveways where you have your garbage truck stop and the car stops every day and that. And then, but you have some other areas where people turn around. So, just a multiple of things, freezing thought. But, being we are one of the property owners, we thought it'd be good for us to participate. And, um, one thing I want to do is look at the deed and see if there's any language in there as to how road maintenance is supposed to be handled. Um, they don't think there's anything in their deeds, but it's something we probably need to look into.
I support the $1,000.
Okay, council, you want to give us just a thumbs up on that if you're in agreement? Uh, anybody got a problem with that? Okay?
And we'll figure out a way to distribute that throughout the, the other four property owners. Based on the share that they paid previously. Um, all right, and then I'll figure out where the, work with finance on figuring out where that $1,000 comes from. Okay, also, the next thing I have is the equity update, equity study update. I sent that out to you. Um, like I said, I didn't, I didn't send it out widespread because it's been a lot of discussion about it. Um, I've met with you and went through the numbers and how we got where we are. And I just want to, um, before we start distributing numbers and talking about numbers and when it's going to be implemented, I want to just make sure council's in agreement on where we are with it. Um, as you know, during the budget deliberations, staff presented a number to you, uh, in working with the consultant on the cost to do an equity study for all in town, for all town employees, about 170, and then, um, also for the fire department, which has another 70 or so employees. Um, we got some cost data back and presented that to you. Um, the consultant was tasked with two projects. One was a market study, which we typically do every year. We look at a third of all employees and, um, analyze their salary based on the market. And if any employees in that third that we look, that we study are below the minimum, we bring them up to the minimum. Okay, that was project A. Project B was to look at all town employees, uh, in relation to the market and what the midpoints are, and then factoring in, um, length of service to, um, handle what many call compression. Uh, I guess there's different definitions of compression, so we're calling it an equity pay analysis. Um, the data we brought to you at the time was that it was going to be an estimated cost of $455,000. Um, we, uh, we flawed in some areas where we didn't consider, uh, we didn't consider benefits, how that would affect it. We also did not, um, factor in that project B would be affected by project A. So, you approved both project A and B on the same night. And so, by project A being approved, it increased the pay scale by 4.5% for that third that we studied. So, that made the cost of project B more expensive. Um, the other thing is, once we rolled this out, uh, and departments looked at it, uh, there were some situations that they've, some departments thought needed to be, um, revised because it, it wiped out maybe some of the incentives they had, or it wasn't being implemented in what they figured, they, they, um, figured was a fair method. So, just various things, and I don't, I don't know if you want me to go through all the different ones, but basically, uh, we looked at it, and when I say we, we have a, we have a team, um, consisting of me, the, the management staff, the budget manager, HR, and the finance director. And we, um, considered all the different factors that were brought to us, um, over a number of weeks. And so, we could streamline this and get a number, uh, that we could bring back to council. Uh, so, in factoring in, um, project A benefits, uh, we had a error, uh, that really the consultant made, but we didn't catch it, that some of the firefighters were in the wrong, um, pay bracket. So, we had to, we had to amend that and appoint a number to it. And then we also, um, had a comparison scale that basically was in, in, um, increments of five years. And some thought that that was not fair. For example, if you had a, a five to 10 years as a scale, some thought it wasn't fair that a nine-year employee was being treated the same as a five-year employee. So, we went back and looked at that, and we made the scale, a ye, a yearly scale. So, it looks at each year individually. So, that has some cost implications with it also. And so, the cost, um, as it stands now, uh, and there were some situations that we, we just couldn't fix everything. Um, like I told council, we had a study that looked at, um, the town as a whole and the fire department, but, but in essence, it started looking at every individual situation because you could start factoring in all kinds of things. And, uh, this study, uh, it can't fix everything. And then the other thing I want everyone to understand is not everyone's going to get a raise out of this study. Uh, the data's going to show that, you know, you're where you're supposed to be, um, you're within the range. Um, so, there's going to be some disappointments regardless. Even if the study was perfect from the get-go, there was, you know, some people were not going to get, um, an increase. So, I still think as a town, we're better off having done the study. And, um, unfortunately, uh, we didn't have all of the data in proper order when we presented to you during the budget and have had to come back and, uh, re, re, um, communicate that to you. So, now as it stands, the cost to implement this would be, uh, $1,400,051. And so, that's well over what you budgeted, well over, um, what you had implemented for a tax increase. So, as a solution, what, um, what I'm recommending is that we fund the study for half a year, um, so to lessen the impact on the budget. Uh, so that would make, make it be a little over $500,000, uh, which is about $50,000 over what was budgeted. Uh, we feel like we can absorb this within the departments. We have lapped salary and other means. Um, so that way we will stay within budget and we can implement the study. But going forward, we would implement it at its full, um, full amount in future years. So, um, I'll stop there, see if there's any questions or if you want me to elaborate on anything any further.
Total cost during the new study was $1,451,000. It's $1,4051.
Yeah.
That's some big, that's, that's $396,000.
Okay, I thought I said 4,000, 51.
You said 400,000.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, council, um, and, uh, Mr. Dick, uh, excuse me, Mr. Dickerson met, uh, with, uh, each of you either individually or by twos, and, um, that's covered most all of this, I believe. Um, you've heard his recommendation. Questions or comments at this time? Mr. Behringer?
No comment. Um, I, I understand the presentation, and I understand, um, how the numbers turned out the way they did. I just have to go on record in saying I'm very disappointed. Um, I have been advocating for over 10 years for the pay for the firefighters to be brought up to where it should be, and it has, it's 10 years, and it's finally almost there. And we told them it was going to be there, and now we're having to say, but you gotta wait a little bit longer. Um, I understand where we are, but I, I really do not like having to go back to these men and say, well, you're not going to get it yet because it's going to be a situation where they're, they got excited, they came in here, and they thanked us for doing, uh, for doing it, and now they're going to have to wait. And so, it, it's unavoidable as, as far as I understand, but I'm disappointed.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, other comments, uh, observations, questions by council?
I just want a quick one. I understand that lapped salaries will be one way of taking care of the deficit. Uh, any consideration further on the cost share with, with?
Um, there's typically when we do a, a pay study of this nature, um, there's not an increased cost share the first year we implement it, but years going forward, we expect that Wake County will help in the share of, um, the costs for the firefighters that they help fund.
Go ahead.
So, lapped salary is the best option right now.
Okay.
So, my question is, how, when are we going to get the revised projections for the cost for next year? We're not going to wait till next budget season. And are we, we need to project this out position by position as specifically as possible based on what we think our growth's going to be. Because my, my comments in our two-off meetings were, this is a significant budget shift and change, not just for salaries, but also benefits. So, we need to be paying even closer attention to what's, what departments are growing, what positions we're going to be adding. We need to be, because we had five-year projections. We had them for the budget, and now those are just thrown in the air. So, you know, when are we going to get those revised projections? Kind of dovetails with my, another question I have later, but, um, we should probably be putting combination with a quarterly budget update at the end of September, just kind of seeing our, what our revenues are looking like so far this year, trailing off into the previous year. But, uh, um...
The last paragraph talks about the shortfall for next year. That gives you some information. And we do have, we do have spreadsheets, but we don't, with individuals, but we don't share those.
As we get closer into the budget season, as we're doing these quarterly updates that we said we would do because of COVID, we need to go ahead and revise the ones, the projections for next year ahead of time so we can kind of see. Because, uh, I'll save all my other comments, but yeah, I was just, I was very disappointed in the outcome of this, and, um, it's not a good surprise. And, uh, it was avoidable as far as I'm concerned. That's my final comment.
Okay, any others? Um, I, I would just say, I've had several conversations with the town manager on this matter. Um, he, um, you know, he, he didn't defer. He's acknowledged, uh, some, some, some errors and some mistakes that were made, and, uh, I think he's done all he can to, to try to resolve this and bring it back in line. And I'm sure with Mr. Behringer's comments, there'll be more detailed information, uh, moving forward. But, uh, he has presented a plan that, uh, will get us, uh, will get us over the hump. And, um, I believe it's a, it's a, it's a reasonable one at this time unless somebody has some other suggestion. But, uh, with the lapped salaries and the half-year proposal, uh, it can get us there for this year. Any other comments, questions? In essence, I guess, Mr. Manager, you're asking us to, uh, to basically, um, approve this recommendation.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I ask one other question. Um, when the post-scale increase is implemented, exactly when will that be? Will that be at the end of January, or is it going to be sometime different than that when we're talking about, uh, waiting, what, six months or whatever? I'm not clear.
It's, the way we would implement this, and this might be a complicated, um, explanation, but we would go ahead and apply the study, um, as of July the 1st. We're just not going to make any payments until January. That way, everybody's salary...
They won't be retroactive, though.
They will not be retroactive, no.
Okay. But they will come in January?
Yes.
Starting January, stay to the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, the payments, payments.
Yeah. Okay. Questions down here?
I just, I don't know. Uh, so much was put in this thing, and where the, where the bucket got dropped, I don't know. And, uh, a lot of attention to detail. And like everybody else, I'm disappointed. There's a lot of staff out there, very motivated. What we had done, it was looking good. Then, uh, get the phone call, and my heart dropped out when I found out the results. So, um, these kind of mistakes, we've really got to stay on top of. And, and, and I'm not a micromanager, but anybody had any part with it owns this project as far as I'm concerned. The data they give you, they own that data. And so, need to find out where the shortcomings were and, uh, fix it so it don't happen again. I'll just leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, okay. Anybody else? I will ask the council to, um, approve the, uh, recommendation made by the town manager, um, I guess by way of a motion.
One more quick, quick question. What would be the cost to implement it a month earlier?
A month earlier?
$100,000.
Yeah, we just, I'd have to divide it by 12, I believe, and then, yeah, another $100,000, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we had to vote on it? Each, just tell us when he's, I mean, this already been approved in the budget, the amount of funds. He's just, he's just given us an explanation and that the funding, uh, for this will be effective January 1st of 2021.
Well, we probably do not have to vote on it, but I wanted to ensure that council,
As long as I get a thumbs up, I mean, we'll, it'll be all in salary money, so we anticipate we're not going to go over in the overall salary. But we typically do a, um, third quarter, um, report to you. So, that's some information we can report in the third quarter as part of our, um, presentation.
All right. Counsel satisfied with the consensus? Okay, thumbs up? I'm seeing, shaking your head. I don't see anybody, uh, disagreeing. All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything else?
Um, we do have one other item, um, that came up last week as an emergency. I'm gonna let, um, Mr. Hodges cover that. We have a drainage issue, um, that we may have to, this town may have to step in. We have a drainage issue that we may have to, this town may have to step in and try to help alleviate on Parkwood, which is in Greenbrier.
Mayor members, counsel, I'm sorry to add something to your agenda tonight, but we do have another sewer failure and I'm going to try to get a graphic up that Mr. Johnson and I can speak toward tonight. There's a sewer line similar to some others that we've had to repair in the Greenbrier neighborhood in past years where we've had some failures with old pipes. Many of these were done not to the current standards that we would be installing them today. And so we've had one failure that is a failure of a pipe that is running through a residence yard and a structure that was put on the property before this owner purchased it is in jeopardy. There is a garage that is being jeopardized by recent rainfall. So I'm going to see if I can split this and also get Mr. Johnson on. So this graphic is Parkwood, Parkwood and Winterlocken. And the lot on the corner here, there's a sewer, the stream that runs through the back of these properties coming from Highway 70. Let's try to blow on that one more time. That comes into this yard and then goes into a pipe. It then goes across this yard, and this was how this was designed back in the 60s, and then into pipe in the street that goes across through another property and then into stream, another finger of this stream that runs from the north. This was sort of questioned as to whether or not this was town sewer infrastructure or stormwater infrastructure to maintain. We did find that there was a stormwater easement that was done in the 90s. So we, by former town attorney Bill Anderson, so we believe the intent was to codify that stormwater easement, which sort of implied that the pipe was ours to take care of. That pipe is now failing. As you can see, there's a structure right near the corner of it, a garage that was added. In looking at this, staff believes that the best way to remedy this for the long haul would be to come in and run stormwater pipe down the property line of this property, down the street frontage to the inlet here and get it back into the system. So in general, that's what we believe we need to do. We do have a little bit of budget dollars left in the money that we had appropriated to work with McAdams for stormwater studies. And so we're going to get, if we could, if you're so inclined tonight, get a thumbs up from you to expend part of that. We think about $12,000 would be needed to do a quick design on the work and then we find out how much the repair is, we can come back to you with more details. But we do have, there is some sense of urgency just because there's sort of an implied ownership of the pipe or maintenance agreement of the pipe being the town's. And then with it failing due to no cause of the current property owner, it's leaving them in a pretty precarious situation. So with that, I'll see if Chris has anything he wants to add to that discussion as well.
No, I think Mr. Hodges covered everything pretty accurately. We're just trying to make sure that the long-term integrity of that pipe system can be put into place in a, in a, in a way that not provide any further risk to the structure. And this is probably the way, we probably would have designed it if we had designed it today as a new subdivision, but we're just trying to, obviously there was a stream that ran through that area back in 60s, 50s and 60s when they originally installed the original pipe system. And so it's gone through a couple of different iterations and extensions through the property. And we just need to make sure that the sinkhole is something that is corrected and provides us the best access for future maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Counsel, questions?
Yes, sir. The old pipe, if we run the new one, which is obviously the best answer, but the one presently going under it, what's going to happen to that pipe? Are we responsible for having that one dug up in the center of his garage? What's the game plan there?
We'll talk to the engineer, but more than likely that we'll, if possible, we may fill it with grout so that it doesn't have to be removed out of the ground.
And to Mr. Matthews' point too, the property owner is not expecting the town to bear the entire burden of fixing this. He recognizes that part of the issue was caused by previous owners of the property and so he's just grateful that we're, we're looking at the situation and trying to provide some alternatives. So this would require us to get a new easement from him, possibly abandon the old easement. And so we'll be going back once we know the cost of this and trying to negotiate out what portion of it makes sense for the town to participate in and what parts of it, like filling the pipe or other things that we would expect the current owner to do. Okay, thank you.
Because based off this, it appears that a previous owner built the garage over where it easement was.
Yep. And possibly also extended the pipe back in the day without.
Approval.
Without approval to do it.
Or permit.
Right. And so both of those are likely to have happened, Mr. Singleton.
Got you.
Other questions, comments?
Does a pipe terminate on the east side of, I don't know what direction this is. Yeah, it's north. On the east side, is that the terminal for that and the stream comes into that?
And the stream is daylighted from there back to, part of the way to 70. I'm not sure if it goes back in another pipe structure before you get to 70 behind another house or if it's daylight the entire way. But that is the terminal, it's right there where it starts in and that's where the, that's where the cave-in has occurred at the mouth of that because it's not been maintained properly.
Okay, counsel, good with the recommendation?
All right. And then we'll come back and report back on findings of cost to fix it and staff and the property owner are appreciative of you working with us on that.
Is that covered under their homeowner's insurance?
I don't know. I wouldn't want to speculate on that. I do believe there is some question in the property owner's mind as to whether or not everything that ought to have been disclosed about their purchase of the property a couple of years ago was done so. So while I don't want to speak for him, I believe that he is probably inclined to follow through on.
But to Mr. Singleton's point, it was probably an easement that was, we don't have liability because it was built incorrectly in an improper place, I guess. Thank you.
In proper place and probably improperly constructed. It's a nice way of saying it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges, for your report. Is that it for you, Mr. Attorney? Excuse me, Mr. Town Manager, I was trying to get to the attorney for his reports if you had.
Thank you. I've got 18 things to go over.
Okay.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, counsel, I'm inclined, just before we go into closed session, to give counsel a shot at counsel reports. I'll start down here to Mr. Vance.
I'd like to extend a thank you out to Public Works for the over and above duty they did with the recent storm and checking on a problem that was in the neighborhood pertaining to a flooding issue and working with the residents there. I definitely appreciate that. It was a late night visit to look at the high watermarks and then eventually come back the next day and have a conversation with the property owners about their, about the design. So thank you very much, Public Works.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Just a few quick things. One, it's not self-serving as it sounds. There's a tree down in J.C. Park on Sycamore and I'm just curious to, what the process is for getting that cut up and moved. There's a huge oak tree, I think, just fell over in the middle of the park. So I'm just curious the timeline for, I'm sure it has to be bed out or something.
So yes, that contract came to my office this, late this afternoon, so we've been working with finance tomorrow. It's quite a large tree and we'll have a contractor in to remove that, so that's been the process.
Thank you so much. The other is that a question, it's an email a week last week about the Amazon and Hillwood liquidated damages. What's the status of confirming that we're on track with the?
Yeah, we.
Chill is running? We're collecting the dollars?
We got, we got, we got Hillwood to confirm that liquidated damage has started on a certain date and is in process. So now we contacted them again and said that we want some documentation that talks about when it started and what the balance is as of a certain date, like today or whenever. So we're still, we're waiting on that, but we did request it.
The other, when will we get sales tax revenue numbers for third and fourth quarter, for the spring and the, I guess for, third and fourth quarter? Third and fourth quarter. When do those sales tax numbers come?
Three months lag on that, quarter lag.
I'm curious just.
I think about the next financial report? Which I think will be at the next meeting, typically the second meeting.
How hard hit they were and what impacts will be on our budget. The other is the personnel policy update procedure that was adopted by council, I think at the end of last year, before I got on council. And I'm just, want some more details on the process for making amendments and changes to the personnel policy. I know that discretion was given to the town manager to make small updates, but I have some concerns in version control, making sure that there's a most accurate version, that staff has access to most accurate version and know when there were changes. HR is a very slippery place and where one word can make very significant legal differences. And so if we could have maybe in our work session, talk about that a little bit. I'm just, I know that it was major things that would come to council, but I just want to make sure things are logged so that there's a change log.
We have a current copy, but yes, you can.
Work session, just walk us through how that's tracked. That would be helpful. That's all I've got.
I need to report 402 West Garner Road. Again, this is like at least the third, maybe the fourth time. Yard needs mowing. They seem to mow, there's a vacant lot beside it and then there's a house on that property. They mow the vacant lot, they don't mow the yard around the house and there's tall grass around the corner, corners of the property. So if we could get something done about that, it's just, it's really in bad shape. And I also wanted to reiterate my hope along with the mayor's that we would form a, some kind of a public campaign for keeping our town clean and looking better. I know there's a lot of issues with trash pickup, every town has it, but if we can make some kind of a public statement or public program to encourage people to join us in keeping, doing their part in helping keeping it clean.
Mr. Manager, if I could just report to Ms. Behringer that Mr. Greiner did submit the abatement to Public Works this afternoon for 402 because the timing had worked out. So he had updated myself as well as Mr. Jones that he had done that. So they received that today, so they'll go out and mow it now that it's not been done within the allotted time.
Is there anything, this happens every summer, all summer long at that property. Is there anything that can be done to mitigate that so that it's not a constant? I mean, is there any penalty that we can levy that makes them want to get out there and mow it like they ought to?
I, I believe that Mr. Greiner is doing everything that he can to try to motivate them. And I know a couple of years ago, we reviewed what our policies were to see if there was any additional teeth, so to speak, that we could put in them. And at the time, I think findings came back that, that we were doing about the best that we could, but it's spent some time there, so I can go back and revisit that and see if there's anything else we can do.
And there's a tractor trailer that continues to park on the railroad right of way many nights in the week, every weekend, and sometimes as early as, you know, like eight or nine o'clock Friday morning. And this past weekend, he had the front end of the motor area opened up and he was working on it. So that's, that's not, that's a violation as well. And I also just wanted to say that I had gotten a certificate of appreciation from the League of Women Voters for public service and commemoration of Women's Equality Day back on August 25th, excuse me, 26th. That was 100 years since women got the right to vote, so it was nice to get that certificate.
Did you mention a location for the tractor trailer? I'm sorry if I missed it.
Right behind what used to be the oddity shop.
Yeah, the oddity shop.
Yeah. I bet, I don't think I said that.
Thank you and congratulations on the certificate for sure. Mr. Singleton?
Well, I'd like to mention to Mr. Jones earlier, I'd like to thank Public Works for their work, their remotes to dog parks, kind of like working. Because we, I think the day they started, we had that down for the night, might have washed it halfway, they had to go back and place it back in, put it back in place. But anyway, appreciate the work they did on getting that in place.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Oh, compliments to all the new sidewalk work going on, especially those crossovers down on Timber Drive. They've been diligently working this past week and getting that done, that cut through as well as crossing the Y. And I'm excited about the Matthews Memorial Crossing down there at Lake Benson Park when those are done and it'll make me happy, but they're getting it done, so we're excited about it. And I've shared a lot with people, I said, there's one there, there's one there, there'll be one here. So those places are really used, especially Lake Benson Park up there. But it's looking good, great job. Thank you.
We can take some tobacco twine down there and let Mr. Matthews cut it so it's ever ridden.
I could do that.
We'll discuss that another time.
Yes, sir. I bring a backer stick, I can put it back in.
I can use a backer stick if I want.
Some about, and a holiday that we have not traditionally recognized, or the Juneteenth holiday. And so the council agreed with the mayor's suggestion to appoint a committee. That committee should be meeting tomorrow morning, probably virtually, comprised of Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Town Manager Dickerson and some other folks in the community, but it's about a six-person committee. I think we're meeting virtually, is that right? Or some are coming in in person, I guess.
Yeah, it's optional, but.
But anyway, that's a kickoff meeting. I don't think it'll take a long time, but the idea is to, is to, and I've got a little charge written out to look at that holiday and get additional information about it, get us informed and talk about some ways we can, as a town, recognize and memorialize that day perhaps.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more, 30 seconds. 10, 20, 20, 20.
All right.
I think Mr. Hodges sent the link out to the development pipeline information to everyone. I haven't gone back to him to do some updates, but if you could look at that, staff has put in a lot of work and I think Maury as well, to getting some data into there as a starting point. It's a work in progress, but there's some information there.
And we thought all along that we would have a different way to pull that out, so it would be simplified. So not, you know, any feedback you've got, but especially anything that if you've got some of those fields that you'd like to be seeing more regularly, our goal is to pull all of that, I think there's 32 columns in that spreadsheet, into eight or 10 that you want to see on a regular basis and put it somewhere that you can get it whenever you'd like to get access to it.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, I believe we need a motion to go into closed session and a citation for that. There are two items, right, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Okay.
Going to close.
Good.
Session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A1 to consult with the town attorney. And also under 143-318.11A4 to discuss economic development.
Some moves for the statutes recognized by Attorney Baggett.
Okay. Second by Ms. Behringer, I believe, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, I declare that we adjourn from regular session and now in closed session.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Are you ready? Okay, I declare that we're back in.
An open session. The council went into closed session to confer with attorney on a manner of advice on a town policy issue that will be dealt with in a public forum at a future date by council. And also the council considered an economic development issue and sought to give some advice to our economic development director in regards to a question that he had. With that, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
So moved and seconded by Ms. Singleton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Declare us adjourned. Declare us adjourned.